The views and opinions in this program are not those of CISA 7 or Spectrum.
I'd like to call this special board meeting to order. We'll start with a roll call of board members. Beth, can you help us with that, please?
Good evening. McCoy?
Here.
Becker?
Yeah.
Smith?
Here.
McCall?
Here.
Shelton?
Here.
Andenhobo?
Here.
Warren?
Here.
All seven board members are in attendance. I'd also like to introduce our superintendent, Steve Merly, along with members of his cabinet. We are also joined by a member of the inner-city Student Council, Mr. Noah Becker. With that being said, we'll go right into our superintendent's update. I'll hand it over to Superintendent Merly to begin with the reopening of Green Bay schools.
First, I'd like to, before I get into the conversation, I'd just like to thank the board for taking the time to take up this challenge, to think very deeply about this, to spend quite a bit of time both at and in between meetings focused on the research, asking the right questions, and being prepared to be here tonight and be present and be part of this process. I think we recognize that all of the choices that we have in front of us are not good choices. Students in classrooms and teachers is always our first choice, and unfortunately, because of the state of the nation, the state of Wisconsin, the state of Brown County, we find ourselves in a position tonight where we're trying to make the best bad choice that we have available to us. We've been very fortunate. I'd like to thank all the members of the community. They've written, they've called, they've participated in the listening session last night, and I think that it's really important as part of this process to acknowledge that all of these options carry costs. They carry costs for the students and their families, for our staff, for the community as a whole. And I think that that's what makes this entire conversation and ultimately the decision the most difficult. We've been very fortunate. Internally, we've had eight leadership teams that have been working on this, approximately 100 participants in those teams. Those folks have been working diligently over the past month. They started July 6th. Hard to believe it was just a few short four weeks ago, but everything that you see in front of you and the content, plus unbelievable amount of work behind the scenes, really getting down into the granular data is really a result of these folks rolling up their sleeves at a time when normally they're focused on other things, and in this case, they're focused on the fall, on the future of our students, and what school will look like. And I think that one of the other things that's important, and we talked about this in our work group meeting earlier today, is that while we've had four weeks to work very hard at this process, we still have four weeks in front of us. And I liken climbing a mountain. You get to the summit, you get to celebrate, but at the same time, you still need to get back down. And so we know that we're four weeks into this, and we still have four weeks to go until we get to the start of the school year. So with that, you have a slide deck that's attached to this. I'm going to walk through a selected group of those slides, certainly invite you to ask questions as we go along. There's a couple of things that I think probably merit some additional attention as we go through there. If those aren't things that you have to bring up, I may pause and spend some time walking through those. So, let's see if I can get my screen shared here. Oh, Josh, I need to ask if you can allow me to share my screen, please. There we go. Thank you, sir.
Josh?
Yes?
It's Rhonda. I'm getting several messages that people aren't able to access the link. I just wanted to share that for the live stream.
Okay. It is out there on YouTube.
Any?
I just got a message that said it's live.
Okay, so what would you recommend people? Is it maybe refresh?
Yeah. Refresh.
Refresh the screen.
Okay, I'll let them know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Unplug it, plug it back in.
Okay.
All right. So like I said, I'm going to go through some select slides on here. Just actually to check first, I was going to check to make sure that you can see the slides up in front of you. Yes?
Yeah.
Okay, great. And I don't have it in slide presentation, just because I'm going to jump through there, and rather than rifling through all of them, I'll just scroll to those ones that I'd like to pull out and have a little deeper discussion about. So again, as we've talked about this, we're looking at multiple options in front of you, and what I'd like to do initially is just pull right down to the bottom here and talk about the recommendation, then come back and walk through it. After this past four weeks and the work that we've done, both internally as part of the district team, and externally working with the other districts and municipal and commercial entities in Brown County, our recommendation at this point in time is to consider off-site learning as our best choice, given concerns that we have about the current status of the spread of the COVID virus in Brown County as it affects the school district. So with that said, let me walk back up to the top and talk a little bit about how we reached this recommendation. We continue to talk about the guiding principles that we have. First and foremost for us is the health and safety of our students and our staff. We continue to be concerned about the ability to bring students in and to provide the appropriate safeguards to ensure that they have that safe, secure, and nurturing environment while they're present in our schools. Obviously, the secondary consideration that we have on there is the continuity of learning. We are a teaching and learning organization, and as we heard from multiple parents last night, we recognize the importance of ensuring that our children are able to maintain academic progress as we move throughout the school year. Equity on the right-hand side of the slide here, for us means that all students have an equitable access to teaching and learning this fall. I think one of the things that we'll talk about as we walk through the conversation this evening is a significant concern that exists from community members and echoed by board members about how parents cope with a virtual learning environment that may necessitate additional childcare requirements for them. And so there's some things that we've been working on that I think can help address that, but I think that that's something that was clearly front and center in the conversation as we talked yesterday evening in the listening post. Oops, let me back up. Sorry about that. I did mention the work groups. I do want to come back and just say thank you to those. If you note on the right-hand side, those who participated in the process, again, we had teachers and paraprofessionals who helped us really give a frontline end-user experience perception on how these things would impact them in the classroom. You can see that we reached out to our school nurses from a health and safety standpoint, and then from that equity standpoint, you can see multiple people in here who provided us access to folks who may wind up having a disproportionate impact with these decisions, our family engagement coordinators, social workers, and community partners to understand where we're going and what's next. So I mentioned when we were at the last meeting that we're looking at three different options as we went through this planning process over the last four weeks. As I said at the beginning, the most desirable outcome for us is all students in the classroom with all staff. We recognize that might not look like it did in February of 2020, but still that opportunity to bring students back is our ultimate goal. We'd like to do that as quickly as possible. On the other side of that diagram there is blended learning, and that is the hybrid between having all kids in school and having students off-site. And so when we think about a progression to get back to onsite, we recognize that blended learning serves as the bridge to that. And I think one of the things that came up as a concern both last night and through some of the email correspondence we've had is people's perception that perhaps if we go to off-site learning, we may be confined to that for the remainder of the year. And I just want to make sure that we emphasize to you that part of our planning process has really been to get from off-site learning to blended learning as quickly as possible, because that gives us then the opportunity to get to onsite learning as quickly as possible. So we'll talk a little bit more as we move through here about gating criteria and how we consider the opportunity to come back in front of the board and consider a change or a move from off-site learning to blended learning. In that off-site instructional model, we have looked at two. One was a choice model, and that was in the slides that were just prior to these set, the set. And this one is actually what we look at, what we consider start to this school year where all of our students would be offsite. Most of our students would be in a virtual environment, and we would have exceptions for students who have specific needs that can be met only onsite. So as you're looking at the end of that first paragraph, we're talking about our students with disabilities who have specific needs with their individualized education plans, some of our English learners, and some of our students who are at Promise and services that can only be delivered onsite. We also recognize that there's some concerns have been expressed about whether or not we think we can deliver a full complement of instruction in a virtual model. We do believe we can. The teams that have been working on that have taken into consideration all of our specials, and then you'll note on the second bullet here that they've been hard at work developing and refining platforms that will allow us to better reach our students. I'd like to point out that one of the things that we talked about today with that was how we go about creating those professional development opportunities, not only for our staff, but expanding those to our parents. We recognize that parents are partners in this process, and that this is an opportunity for us to fully engage them in these platforms so that they're better suited to help their students. Social emotional health has been a key in the emails and communication that we had last night in the listening session. You'll note on the fourth bullet here that we're looking for those grounding opportunities for students and to create a home base for them that allows them to meet in an advisory process, non-academic, focusing on their emotional well-being, and making sure that they have the opportunity to maintain a consistent connection with an adult at school. And then I mentioned this earlier, I think it'll come up throughout the evening, the second to last bullet there. We continue to work with our community partners to assess their capacity, both onsite for them or perhaps in other areas in the community, which could include school sites to provide additional daycare options for students whose parents are struggling to find assistance with their children through other obligations that they may have. Our model, and I won't spend a lot of time on this, but I do want you to understand that we've started with our youngest learners, so all the way down to our three and four Kers, and developed a robust schedule that ensures that there's an opportunity for them to meet in large group, small group, and individually with their teachers. This allows the teachers the opportunity to provide that whole group instruction, but also to monitor progress individually. At the elementary level, you'll see that again, they're looking at the opportunity to have class, if you will, on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, and then looking for those opportunities to provide both enrichment and intervention on Wednesday, and then also additional office hours for students who may need some additional contact with their teachers that are working on their academic progress. At the middle level, we've got instructional class periods on Monday and Tuesday and Thursday and Friday. I'm sorry, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and then on Wednesday, we've got the advisory homeroom component in there again. Once again, provides that grounding for them, and then you'll notice now at the bottom that that's also a daily part of the process. You know, between these two slides, high school looks very similar. East looks a little bit different with their schedule, but again, it's that opportunity to make sure that there is a semblance of a regular school day for students, and that allows them to progress through their periods and to have, again, somewhat of a normal school day. I'll just stop for a moment and let you know that one of the things that the team has worked on is opportunities for teachers to be able to record classes so that students who need to go back and walk through that content again have the opportunity to do so, or students that miss a class for a variety of reasons have that opportunity to go back and catch up and view that lesson. Out-of-school programs, we heard a little bit about this last night. We've also seen quite a few emails about this, and I share with you that we continue to defer to our state bodies who govern these activities, whether they're things from show choir to athletics. We are working with them to better understand their intent as we get closer to the start of the school year. We have some examples like show choir where the governing bodies determine that there won't be any competitions for the year. WIAA has provided opportunities for conferences to consider delaying at the start of the season and shorten seasons, and so we've been working on that both within the conference and within the district. And then again, that before and after-school program component, we've got some wonderful partners out there. Some are in their facilities, some are in our facilities, and we're working with them to ensure that we've got the opportunity to provide the greatest range of services for parents. You'll note in that second bullet on the right-hand side, our 21st Century Community Learning Centers are looking for creative opportunities to reach children in a virtual environment. Food service, and I know you had a chance to hear from Lynette earlier at a presentation, but I think it's important if you look at the center column on here, that we're looking for both parent pickup meal locations for students and also the consideration for home delivery. She shared a little bit with you about how that would work, but it provides us an opportunity to provide some centralized locations for pickup, but also then to reach people who may wind up struggling to reach those locations. Communication, we're going to continue to make sure that, to the extent possible, we're over-communicating with our parents. We recognize in this time of change, and in particular, the uncertainty and perhaps the required flexibility that goes along with it, that there'll be more of a need than ever to ensure that we have regular, consistent communication with parents. And then the flexibility piece on here, I think, is really important. You'll note over on the right-hand side that we're working with data from Brown County Health Department. And initially, when we had this slide deck up, this referenced state data. At that time, we were struggling to ensure that we had regular access to county data, thanks to Josh and Gwen and their teams for working to develop a methodology for us to do a data poll from the state so that we're able to look specifically at Brown County information when it comes to test rates and to be able to really make a decision based on local needs. I think it's important for us to acknowledge that while we may start offsite with the goal to move to blended as quickly as possible, you'll notice that this isn't a linear chart. It doesn't go just from offsite to blended to onsite. We do acknowledge that we have to be prepared at any point in time to move back and forth between these models, and in the end, that'll really depend on public health metrics. The models, numbers, and these change for us on a daily basis. I provided both an update earlier this morning and then an update right before the meeting tonight. This is our Brown County poll. This is data through July 30th. I'm sorry, this is actually dated through August 3rd, and this shows us that right now we're at 5.9% in Brown County, and that's a difference. If you look at the chart there, you can see that those numbers are trending down, which is wonderful for us. They have something to do with some of the recent mitigation efforts that our municipalities have enforced, but again, it's that opportunity for us to monitor this on a regular basis. One of the conversations that came up last night, it's come up through emails, is what's next for us? We'll be looking at developing gating criteria depending on the board's actions tonight as we look to toggle back and forth between those models depending on the community spread and when we think it's healthy and safe for students to return to school. And again, pending the decision tonight, we'll start to develop some timelines. We'll bring those back to you at the meeting on the 17th. We know that our threshold is 5%. Certainly looks much better today than it did in the middle of the month when it was north of 10%. The last day that we see that in Brown County, it was below 5% was June 26th, so it's been a bit of time before we were that low. But fortunately, if you look at the trends since the middle of the month, we can see we're moving back in that direction. We've had people that have asked specifically about why Green Bay may look different than our neighboring districts. I think these two charts or maps help better understand that. These are census tracts, and again, this is pulled right from the state's website. On the left-hand side, this is actually the number of cases, so you can see how many people have been impacted in Brown County. On the right-hand side, that's the rate of cases per 100,000 people in the census tract. Certainly, you can see on both those maps that we look substantially different than some of our other urban and suburban neighbors, and this has had a large influence for us on our decision-making process. So again, we come to the bottom there. It's our recommendation, the district team, that we consider beginning September 1st in the off-site learning model. In order to do that, most of our students would transition into a virtual learning environment. However, we do want to reinforce that we do have students in the district that have needs that cannot be met through that virtual learning environment, and so there are opportunities for us to both provide additional materials for them at home that may be in the form of paper pencil support, and then we also have some students that will need assistance onsite, and our departments have been working to determine how best to centralize those services and provide those to parents and students in a manner that allows them to comply with things like their individualized education plan or our expectations for English learner services. Just real quickly, the rationale on there, probably the biggest point for us is that reliance on medical professionals. A large part of the work that we've done over the past weeks has involved people from the medical community, from Brown County Public Health. We've been listening to them and understanding their recommendations based on the numbers and the data. They've helped us determine what gating criteria are to return to that blended learning model. Certainly appreciate them and their willingness to step up and help us better understand the science behind that. We are concerned that Brown County is still the third highest transmission county in the state. We continue to watch the state data to better understand which direction Brown County is moving and at what rate. And then down at the bottom there, you can see that a couple of resources there for us to look at, both at the local level and at the state and the national level. So with that, I'm going to stop sharing, bring us back to our full screen, and like the entertaining questions that you have, refer to the board for discussion.
Don?
So Steve, we went, some of the board was able to go to chapel today and look at what buses would look like and classrooms would look like if we would do in-person instruction in fall. And what I took away from that is that with our numbers the way they are right now, we currently cannot meet CDC guidelines for six feet of social distancing, either in the classrooms or the buses. Is that accurate?
Well, I tell you what, if you would indulge me, I actually have a very short video that Lori put together based on our time there, and if it's all right with you, I'd like to show you that very short clip. It's just under two minutes. Would that be all right with the board?
Thank you.
All right. All right, I'll look for a thumbs up from Eric since I can actually see your face on the side of my screen. Are we good here? All right. There's no audio with this, so it's simply the walkthrough of our time today. Thanks to those board members who were able to make it. We also, you'll see in here that we had representatives from both first student and lammers. They were able to bring a couple of buses so that we had an opportunity to see what those look like. A few brave souls willing to get on the bus so that we could take some photos so you could see what the distancing looks like. So with that, we'll start this. So this is a classroom that shows how we would align the desks, and one of the things that we've done is we've worked to make sure that we pulled out all the soft spaces in there, so you see that there aren't rugs, there aren't soft seating areas. Unfortunately, I mean, some of the things like our mindfulness areas are no longer present in those rooms. This gives you an idea what six feet looks like in the hallway as we line up for restrooms. Our physical plant teams worked really hard to manufacture some plexiglass shields that we could use between students if they're at tables. Here's an entrance to the bus. You can see the bus companies have done a wonderful job with signage and helping students understand what the expectations are on the bus, where they can and can't sit. You can't read that. It says safety dog, says paw's off. One of the things we'll do is to make sure that we reinforce that students are being very careful from a sanitation standpoint. You can see the sanitizer there for them to use both when they enter and when they exit the bus. Again, here's some of us on the bus earlier today. The rule will be only one student per seat unless it's a family member. In that case, we can put more than one to a seat. As somebody pointed out today, that does not meet the six-foot CDC guideline, and that is correct. We simply don't have enough buses or enough time to run them at that six-foot guideline. This is an example of how we might have to use bathrooms during the course of the day. We have to schedule them to ensure that students actually have the ability to get in and out without crossing classes. One of the concerns that was shared today was the impact on instructional minutes, and one of the challenges that we had with instructional minutes as we looked at the schedule was, in order to get the restroom breaks, the recess breaks, the lunch breaks in there, and do that in a manner that allows us to keep the students physically distanced during those times, we reduce our normal daily instructional minutes from 420 down to 215 or less. And so that's definitely a challenge for us, but unfortunately, given the requirements that we have to make sure that students are safe in the classroom, that logistically is one of the things that we'll have to do to ensure that our students can travel about the building without interacting with each other.
Christina?
Thanks, Eric. Steve, can you just give a little bit more context to, you know, why the rooms are so bare? I know we saw in the video that there wasn't, you know, the carpeting there, but can you talk a little bit more detail how that connects to the guidelines from the CDC and through the Brown County Health Department?
Sure. So one of the challenges that we have is keeping things sanitized, and you were looking at elementary classrooms there. Elementary classrooms have lots of manipulatives in them. That is various learning devices that students are actually using in the classroom, and we are unable to ensure that we have the ability to clean and sanitize those on a regular basis if we had as many of them in the classroom as we normally do. So one thing you really couldn't see in that one was in the back corner of the one room, there was actually an area for lock manipulatives, and those were set up in such a way that one student would be able to use those during the day, and they'd have to be cleaned that evening, and then a different student could use those the next day. So for instance, if you had 10 kids in that classroom, that particular set of manipulatives would be able to be used by a student once every two weeks. So the rest of the manipulatives have been removed from the classroom. We want to make sure that the room is safe, and we certainly don't want extra temptations in there for kids. And so those pieces have been pulled out. I mentioned that most rooms have had mindfulness areas in them, which is a place for students to go if they need to disengage and reset so that they're ready to participate in a lesson. The problem is that we're running out of physical space. So in order to maximize the number of desks in there, much of the environment that you would normally see in a classroom has been removed. Um, so in order to maximize the number of desks in there, much of the, the environment that you would normally see in a classroom uh, has been removed.
Thank you.
Go ahead Christina.
Sure, I move that the administrate, administration's recommendation that instruction begin on September one, twenty-twenty. And I primarily off-site instructional model with exceptions for individual students, free and appropriate. Public education requirements and that the model be reviewed on a weekly basis using the gating criteria of a fourteen-day trend of five percent or less. Of Brown County COVID-nineteen testing being positive as presented be approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, um, so we have a motion on the table, we will go to continue the discussion. Um, Rhonda, if you'd like to start us off.
Thanks Eric, um, so I have several questions, a lot of these came from staff as well as families. Um, starting off with the structure of the day, I noticed um, specifically in the, in the high school, it says periods one through eight. So is that uh, basically the, the teacher instructing periods one through eight as if school was happening in real time?
Yes, that's the intent behind that, that uh, where possible, we'd like to have as normal a school day as possible for students. So that uh, they are participating in their classes as if they were physically present. Uh, one of the rationale behind that is uh, we remain hopeful that um, this is a short-term solution. Uh, and we have the opportunity to transition back uh, to a blended learning platform and eventually to an onsite learning platform. Uh, and in order to do that, we want to make sure that that transition is as seamless as possible. Uh, so having students start uh, with their regular schedule and their regular day. Uh, hopefully allows us to make that transition uh, easier for students uh, as they uh, work back onto campus.
Okay, and to that point then, so are you saying that they log on, let's say at seven-thirty in the morning if they're middle of high school? And then do they, is it where they have a few minutes between, is it like consecutive hour after hour after hour after hour online? Is that what you're saying?
Well, yes and no, so first of all, we understand that that is a long day for those who participated last night. Four hours was a long time uh, online, but what we want to do is we want to make sure that that period is available um, for that class each day. Uh, there, there is the flexibility for instructors uh, to provide activities for students that could be done both collectively together. So then that would feel a lot like class, uh, but there also may be some independent activities that they may schedule with those students. Uh, that would not require them to be on that uh, particular class period uh, for that day. So there's an opportunity for flexibility there uh, as the teachers develop both what you would consider to be the in-class and the independent activity.
And you had stated that they would actually record those periods potentially?
Yes, that's the idea behind that, recognizing that uh, if, if we run a regular student day. All children may not uh, get up on time to get to their first period class, and so we want to ensure that. Um, if for any reason a student misses a class, they have that opportunity to go back uh, and see that. We also recognize that some kids may want to be able to go back and review a class, um, just in terms of, of catching up on the concept and getting some clarification.
Okay, and so, um, because we had heard from a lot of, of families who actually had discussed that they, they're going to be working through the entire day. And that they would may not be able to, uh, the kids are not going to potentially be able to access that in, in real time as it's going on. Will um, staff be available after hours in case there are issues, um, just needing?
Yes.
Especially, especially not to fall behind, right, so that people aren't falling behind?
Yes, we actually, that was a, a big part of our conversation today. Uh, what we'd like to be able to do is to ensure that we have a range of staff that are available outside of regular student hours. So that would be uh, regular classroom teachers, um, but also I think about uh, folks like our counselors, our librarians. Uh, people who provide technology support, uh, so a broad range of staff uh, who would be available uh, every day. Uh, it might be different people each day, but there'd be uh, people available outside of regular school hours. Uh, that would allow uh, students and also parents um, to uh, reach out to them and get support. Uh, outside of, of that regular student day.
And do you anticipate any staff being onsite to do the classroom instruction?
Yes, we've uh, we've had conversations about and, and lots of requests actually from staff who said. There are things that I have in my classroom that allow me to teach better. Uh, and if I've got access to the equipment in my science classroom, if I've got access to. Uh, math manipulatives that I don't have at home, uh, I could do a better job teaching my children. And so uh, there's an opportunity for us to work with staff to determine uh, how to uh, safely and effectively allow them. Uh, to access their classroom and uh, and again, then as they go through that uh, process of uh, video and recording their classrooms. Um, that could be done right onsite.
So when you say allow them into their classrooms, then am I hearing correctly that maybe this won't be required, it'll be something that they have a choice about?
We talked about that, and one of the reasons that we're not looking at requiring staff to be in there is we have staff that have uh, health compromises. That would prevent them from being present uh, in uh, the classroom. Uh, and if we required all staff to be in there, uh, people who might otherwise be able to teach from home. Uh, would have to have a medical uh, dispensation and then they would not be teaching at all. Uh, we'd like to maximize the number of teachers that we have access to. Uh, and to ensure that, that as many teachers as possible can continue uh, to work with their kids. Uh, we would have that opportunity for them to teach uh, right onsite um, or from home. We also recognize we may have teachers that uh, get sick during the course of the year. Uh, and if they test positive and they have to be quarantined, uh, we don't want to be in a position where we have to have a substitute teacher in there. Uh, when that teacher could transition to teaching from home and maintain that continuity for the students.
And when it comes?
I was just gonna ask you, just if you have a lot of questions, maybe we break them into two sections and see if anybody else wants to go, and then we'll come back to you. But if you just have a few more, then just keep going.
Um, I have quite a few questions, so.
Yeah, maybe we'll, I mean, a-ask maybe one more and then we'll see if anybody else wants to go, we'll come back to you, just to, to keep it going.
Fine, that sounds great. Um, so when it comes to, you seem to have talked about instructional minutes. And you uh, mentioned, you said something about four-twenty that you would potentially have to go down to, what was the number, to what?
When we tried to mock up a schedule, uh, given the requirements that we had for the restroom breaks, the lunch, et cetera. They were looking at potentially as few as two-hundred-and-fifteen minutes in that particular model. Uh, so again, uh, that's part of our work on what a blended uh, platform would look like. Uh, and certainly taking into consideration some of those concerns we have about health and safety for students.
Okay, so um, when it comes to instructional minutes in the off-site virtual model, that's the recommendation. What do you anticipate, are the instructional minutes the same as they would be in a, I guess, normal, regular uh, school year at this point? And what are you um, doing as far as participation for students when it comes to? Whether or not they're participating in the off-site virtual model or not? You know, what's, what's the leverage there?
So, uh, in terms of the minutes, the uh, anticipation right now is that the off-site minutes would be the same. Uh, as our, our regularly scheduled onsite minutes. Our challenge with the blended is that we've got a lot of procedural pieces that we have to take care of. Um, if you noticed on the, the uh, the video, there was a segment there that showed the restroom breaks. Uh, in an order to cycle students through the restrooms, we have to have them there at specific times. Um, same thing with lunch, same thing with recess in order to maintain that physical distancing. Um, so those uh, impinge on our ability uh, to provide those instructional minutes. Because you have to have some very structured times out of the classroom in order to address uh, things that might be taken care of in the normal flow of the day. Uh, in the onsite model, the anticipation is that we would have the same number of instructional minutes um, that we currently have. Uh, and then your, your leverage question, uh, so uh, I think one of the things that people asked uh, last night. We've heard in a lot of the, the email dialogue is uh, frustration with how things worked in the spring. Uh, and our team has worked diligently uh, to improve that, and I think one of the things that people would see. Um, is that this would feel very different than it did in the spring, it would feel more like a regular school year. Uh, and so you're having attendance taken on a daily basis uh, through that homeroom process. Uh, that allows that trusted adult to maintain a connection and communication with the student. Uh, so therefore, if a child doesn't uh, show up in a classroom, uh, right away, we're going to know about that. Uh, it gives the support staff at school the opportunity to reach out, uh, do that while child check and see if there's a reason that. Um, that particular student wasn't engaged in uh, learning that day, um, provide some immediate follow-up to that.
But I do have a follow-up to that, and I, I'm just wondering about what you think as far as if the student isn't participating. If we have students, we know that there are, are students that may not participate, that's just a fact. So what happens to these students, are they then, are they falling under the truancy laws of the state of Wisconsin? What, what happens ultimately to the, to the families who may be experiencing this, um, for all kinds of reasons? Is it, again, the same as the prior school year when we were not in a pandemic? What uh, responsibility and who's responsible and what does that look like as far as um, being punitive?
Well, I'd say we're responsible for the engagement piece, right? Uh, we're opening our virtual doors up, we're inviting those students uh, in to participate, we're taking attendance. Uh, if those students aren't attending, uh, that uh, that obligation falls to us to follow up with the children and their families. Uh, to figure out why it is that they're not attending and what we can do uh, to help them uh, be in attendance on a regular basis. And so, um, our teams uh, will be doing that, and that is we'll be building level teams uh, that would be doing that follow-up. And, and hopefully they're uh, already have or would be developing that relationship with families that allows them to have that dialogue. Uh, the truancy piece uh, is actually, uh, when you think about it, those are those compliance pieces that we have. Whether it's assessments that come to us from the federal government, um, or attendance requirements uh, that uh, that the state has. Uh, and fortunately for us, at least at this point in time, uh, we've got quite a bit of flexibility through the Department of Public Instruction. Uh, they've been very amenable to uh, either making uh, direct uh, changes to. Uh, the rules that are within their purview, um, and if not, uh, their willingness to advocate. Uh, with other agencies in the state to make those changes has been uh, very apparent. And so, uh, the plus for us is that uh, we don't have to look at being punitive through the truancy process. Uh, because that's not a requirement for us at this point in time.
So whatever the waivers were last spring, they've carried through to fall, or are you stating that they're still accurate, they're still active?
Uh, they've changed, uh, so uh, the Department of Public Instruction meets with us uh, on a weekly basis. Uh, superintendents from throughout the state, uh, we continue to petition them uh, for things that we see as necessary for us. Uh, to provide either, for most of us that are talking about either a, an off-site or a blended model. Uh, and again, uh, they've been very receptive to those changes. Um, essentially, they've said, as you work through this process, if you find something that doesn't work for your children. Uh, or their parents, we, we expect us to communicate with them and they expect to uh, work with us to make the changes that will work for our kids. Um, the only area where there's an exception to that is there are requirements that come um, from the federal government. Uh, for instance, assessments, I know has been a question that we've received, uh, quite a few inquiries about. Um, many of those assessments are federal requirements, uh, and the DPI at this point in time doesn't have the latitude to waive those. Um, they have expressed to us though, that any of the assessments that they do have the latitude to waive, um, they're willing to, to waive. And those that they don't, um, they're willing to lobby uh, with the federal government.
Yeah, just have one more question about that, um, you said they've changed, how have they changed?
I'm sorry, what's changed?
That the, the waivers have changed, how have they changed?
The which rules?
Uh, when I was asking about the waivers, you said, well, they, some of them have changed.
Oh.
So I'm asking how they've changed.
Sure, so many of those had fixed timelines up, so they were set to run out at the end of the year. Uh, and uh, as, as uh, the DPI has uh, rules that they have uh, jurisdiction over, others the state legislature has. Uh, and so those that the DPI has the ability to, to uh, make exceptions to. Um, they're in the process of, they've either done it or they're in the process of doing it now. Uh, but those uh, that the DPI or the state legislature waived last year expired at the end of the school year, so they had to reinstitute those now. For the start of the next school year.
All right, um, okay, we'll, we'll go around, uh, Brenda, why don't you go, and then we'll go to Andrew.
Okay, one of the questions I have, uh, Steve is very specific. Um, a mom was asking me if she were to decide to homeschool this year. And she's also an intra-district transfer into our district. Would she be able to still remain um, as an intra-district trans- transfer a year from now? Does she lose that spot because she hasn't enrolled in school?
I believe the answer to that is no, uh, obviously, uh, inside our district, we have a lot uh, more jurisdiction. Uh, so the intra-district transfers inside uh, would hold, I know questions that we've received from people are. Uh, what does this mean if I'm in one of our choice programs and, and will I still be able to remain a student there? Uh, and uh, the answer to that is yes, uh, that we've said that uh, people will be able to hold their, their slots in those schools.
Steve, could I just add a, a point to that? So it, maybe this would be easier to clarify, if attendance is broken, Brenda, by leaving the district. So enrolling in homeschool or enrolling in a neighboring school district or a private school. That will break a student's intra-district transfer and they will be required to reapply. If they remain here in the district and they choose the virtual option. Um, so for example, they're, as Steve was saying, they enroll in one of our choice programs like DaVinci or Aldo. They would um, maintain that attendance if they're choosing the virtual program. When we are able to come back onsite and remain in that virtual program.
So if, if they were to, uh, but if they were to, to not attend and, and they wanted to just homeschool their child. Would they still retain that inter-district transfer spot? No, okay, they have to be enrolled. They have to be enrolled in some way in our school to keep their spots.
Correct.
Yes, okay.
You're un-enrolling, yeah.
Correct.
There's actually unrolling by not, by not attending.
Well, for purposes of homeschool, you are un-enrolling from the district, so that creates your attendance with the school district.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Actually, that's a good distinction to make because I know we've had uh, quite a few emails, um, when people have talked about. Uh, what if we come back uh, into a blended model and I'm not comfortable and I want to stay uh, in the virtual model? Uh, and, and they unfortunately uh, sometimes refer to that as homeschooling, and obviously that's not, that's still being enrolled in the district. Um, just selecting the virtual program, uh, and in that case, you would still retain your uh, position in that program. Because you'd still be enrolled in the district, you would just be electing to have your child at home in the virtual model as opposed to being in the blended.
Okay. And then are we having, uh, are our schools having conversations about having any kind of in-person parent? Child, teacher, um, meetings and, and things like that to, um, for certain families? Or has there been any kind of conversation around those kinds of personal interactions?
There has been, uh, they have not gone uh, into much more detail about that. One of the things that I had shared with the teams as they went through this was, uh, we wanted to get as much detail down as we could about uh, the two models. That we thought best uh, met our kids' needs, uh, but then there were some things that I said, uh, you know, let's make sure we get that piece done. And let's allow that board, the board, the latitude to make a decision, uh, and then recognize well, four weeks after that to fine-tune. Uh, many of those components of, of whichever model is selected. But yes, that had, that has been discussed, it just hasn't been fleshed out yet.
Okay, thanks, that's all I have for now, Eric.
All right, uh, we'll go to Andrew.
Um, thank you, um, I'm gonna, I'll have questions in a variety of areas. Uh, but I'm going to start off with the metric. So the motion that was made says, the model be reviewed on a weekly basis. Using the gating criteria of a fourteen-day trend of five percent or less Brown County COVID-nineteen tests. Before I get into the merits of whether or not positive test metric is, is the one to use. I, I need to know what the definition is of a fourteen-day trend of five percent or less.
So we're pulling the data, uh, and again, I'll, I'll tell you right now that uh, my area of expertise lies in public education and not public health. Uh, it's really not medicine, um, so we defer to others uh, to help us uh, understand. Uh, the appropriate selection for the gating criteria, uh, and by that I mean both uh, what metric to use and the length. Uh, and the numbers, and so uh, the recommendation to us was that uh, uh, on the state uh, data site. Were able to uh, look at the uh, daily uh, positive test rate, uh, that allows. we're able to look at the daily positive test rate that allows.
More specifically, what is the definition, before we even get to that, what is the definition of a 14-day trend of 5% cases? I know what 14 days in a row of 5% cases looks like. I know what a statistically significant declining trend looks like, but I don't know what a trend of 5%. I don't know what that means.
It's the 14-day rolling average of those positive test rates as reported by the state.
Andrew, the way we're calculating that on that chart is the sum of positive tests over the past 14 days, over the sum of all tests over the past 14 days.
So then, right, but that would be, so that's right, good, that will smooth out the jumps. But then if you will have these as you get closer to reaching the metric, that you'll be, you'll be bouncing back and forth. So what does, again, what does trend mean if I'm? So today, we're, today is, today is off the two o'clock numbers, I believe, brings us down from 5.9 to 5.7. So if you're, are we checking? So what happens when it's 5.249, 5.147, 5.3, which will happen because the days you're subtracting off from two weeks ago might be high days, might be low days. So the key, the key is that, you know, before we get to whether the positivity rate is the thing to do or not, knowing what trend means may sound picky, but it's extraordinarily important because to be able to vote for something, I need to be able to tell people what the, you know, what that means.
Certainly. So we're looking at it every day. And by looking at it every day, we're going to be able to look backwards and see where things are at. And that one chart that I showed you, clearly you can see over the last five days that the number's been declining each day. So that helps us better understand where we're at today and where we're going. And so our goal is that as we see the line moving towards 5%, for us, that's a trigger to move forward with the next steps in the move from offsite to blended. Gives us the opportunity to reach out to you as a board and ask you to calendar it for a decision. Allows us to start working with our parents, to ask them, given the information that you have available to you now, how many are ready, willing and able to send your students back to school? Check with our staff to see if there are those that are unable to return for health conditions. So that when we get to that next board meeting, we have enough information for you to make a decision. Obviously, we'll have multiple days where we can look at day upon day upon day and look at those numbers because you're exactly right, Andrew, there'll be a little, a little bounce in there. But if we see that it appears that we are closing in on that 5% number, then that gives us the opportunity or request for you, from you, permission to move from offsite into a blended model and then reach out to our parents and set a timeline for them for the return of their kids to class.
So you're not, are you not proposing automatic triggers?
Well, at 5%, what we're hearing from our public health professionals is 5% is the number that they're saying is safe for us to return to class. And so in the onsite through a blended process. And so that's our goal is reaching that and bringing students back into that blended model. But keep in mind, if we hit 5% today or if we were at 5.2, 5.1, and we've been in that range the last two or three days, you as a board don't meet for two weeks. I think it's responsible for us to make sure that if we see ourselves where we think that within that timeframe that we will be safe to return to a blended model, we want to be able to initiate some of those steps prior to arriving at the board table and asking for your vote for that move.
So this, okay, yes, yes, but does this motion, would this motion mean that when 5% is reached, hybrid will start?
It wouldn't start the next day.
That if 5% is reached, the board will be asked if it's ready to start hybrid?
Yes, we will come back to you and ask for a vote for the move. We will not make it.
You're not, you're not asking for an automatic trigger?
No, we will come back and we will ask you. We think that 5% is that number that we're shooting for and we want to make sure that if we're in that position, we don't want to come to you two weeks from today and say, hey, what do you think? Should we do it? We want to make sure we're taking some of those preliminary steps so that if you say yes, we're prepared to do so sooner rather than later.
So I, okay, so I, I think people might be expecting there to be a rule though, so that they're not, people are, people are going to be afraid that it's going to be five, you know, 5%, but you didn't feel like it, or 5%, but maybe there's not going to be four yes votes because that social distancing sounds pretty awful, right? So I guess I had always seen this as having automatic triggers. This obviously doesn't mean that if on Sunday night, the 14-day average finally touches 5%, we open tomorrow, but it also can't be. So I guess I'm a little bit, I wasn't expecting that this would be something other than an automatic, an automatic trigger.
So my suggestion would be if you'd like an automatic trigger, when we come back and talk to you about a reentry and a transition from offsite to blended on August 17. If you want an automatic trigger in there, then I think we should bring to you a very definitive calendar that spells that out and then answers those questions that you just asked so that people know when we get to that point, is it two days, 10 days, 20 days before their kids come back to class? We can certainly do that for you. I guess I looked at it from the standpoint of our previous discussion. I certainly don't want to usurp the board's authority. And so if that's the intention of the direction that the board would like to go, I think we can definitely bring back to you a pretty specific timeline. But I don't, I don't want to get out in front of ourselves and I certainly didn't want to take away that decision-making process from the board.
And I don't know what, I don't know what the answer is there. Ultimately, you know, I was thinking of situations too where, you know, could there be a situation where a metric was reached, but the board in good conscience, everyone knows it was reached for a strange reason. The example I give is, God forbid, a huge case spike, but the CDC shows up with 100,000 tests and everyone gets one. That might look good from a testing metric, but obviously you're not ready to start if there's a, hopefully not, but if there would be a thousand new cases. So obviously, there could be times that the board would have to do something different, but I also think, I think if it's passed as it is and that's not an automatic trigger, then you're faced with voting yes on a, on an indefinite. Like I thought the vote time was going to be on a, perhaps on going offsite until however defined the 5% metric has been reached. And so if we're not, then we're in a position of voting for something that's, that's open-ended and subject to, you know, further board votes, though anything could be subject to further board votes. I, I guess I'll, I'll finish up on metrics and then I'll let someone else have a turn. I have other areas too. But why the positivity metric? And do we have, do we have a healthcare professional able to come into the meeting and talk about that?
So I did attach the memo from Dr. Rye to our agenda today. And as we've been meeting both of Brown County superintendents and with leaders in the local community, both public health and the business community, we have relied on really two sources. Brown County Public Health and our medical professionals with Aurora, Ballin and Pervaya. And those metrics have come to us from them. So I did ask Dr. Rye if he could provide some documentation to support that and I've attached it to the agenda. And that's their recommendation for that gating criteria.
Okay, let me just, just check that out quick and then I'll.
I was going to ask a question while you were looking, but go ahead, sorry.
Oh, I, well, I found, I think, I think I got it here already. Okay, is it this thing detailed, Prevail Health 832020? Okay. Did Dr. Rye know that there was probably going to be a question about why the positivity rate is the thing?
I did not discuss with him that concept.
Because it, the memo doesn't, I mean, it's a well-written, it's a well-written memo. It talks about important things for districts to consider. It talks about, yep, so there's a lot of good things in it. But why a positivity metric is the correct metric is not, is not covered here other than WHO and CDC said so. And there are problems. So, so there are problems with the positivity metric, which are two of them. First of all, as I said, if you have, it's, it's really, the negative tests play a very heavy role in how this metric works. So you could have that situation where you had a huge case spike, but if it's, if a lot of testing is flooded into the area, that can give you a fake low. My problem with the positivity metric isn't that, I, you know, I'm not trying to pick one metric or another that will get us to more choices for families sooner. It's, I want to use a good metric. You also could have, I know, and I know why you use it. I know why the positivity testing metric is important early in an outbreak because if you're under testing, if you test 100 people and 25 of them are, are sick, you know, your raw number is low, but that's a real high positive number. That should be a warning sign to you. But 40-some thousand tests have been taken in Brown County already. So yeah, we really have a lot writing here on something that is very influenced by the number of negative tests. And I don't know how I can, you know, I thought we would have someone here that could, you know, I would be certainly open to listening if a medical professional was able to talk about why now the positive test rate is still the best metric. But in fact, this memo just says because someone else said so. And from a WHO perspective, you know, there, that's a global perspective. There's countries where the positivity metric is super important because they're under testing. So if, if there isn't going to be a further explanation available of why the, why the positivity metric as opposed to cases per 100,000, you know, new cases per 100,000, I guess that, that affects my being able to. I would need to know why we're picking that, that metric. So, all right, I can, I guess I'm done with questions about metrics. I have questions on other areas. So I guess I'll step aside if someone else wants to jump in.
Go ahead, Christina.
I have four questions, one of which is about metrics, Andrew. So I'm going to jump on what you were just talking about. Do we have a metric right now, Steve, on how we move from blended to fully in-person?
No, we don't. And part of it is we're better understanding these, just as Andrew said, as we're working with our health professionals. I know one of the concerns that was out there was that the recommendation is that we need to be low in order to move back to onsite. And low may be, according to at least some of the communication we received from parents and that we heard last night, might be unattainable. I don't have the expertise to know the answer to that, but that's something that as we look at this bridge model of moving from offsite to blended and blended to onsite, that's something that is on the list of things that we need to better understand. So that when we have a timeline for you, once we get into blended, you're going to want to know when blended to onsite happens. And so we need to better understand that. I don't know if low is the right metric for us, given this particular methodology. So that's something that we have to spend more time.
Okay, thank you.
And if I just add to that, low is, so yes, low is unattainable and I was worried that low was unattainable. Yep. But now, now the, now the motion has not even a mechanism to contemplate going back to, to onsite. So that to me is even, even worse. I mean, at least if, if we really lick this thing, which I don't, the low would be 24, 26 cases total in two weeks. So no, I don't, I would be very happy if we hit that even after a vaccine. I hope to be wrong, but I, you know, that's, that's less than two a day. You know, now we're looking at voting for something where there isn't even the, the criteria at all. It's not, you know. People, we're going to have people very concerned that whether it's, whether it's what we would intend or not, people are going to look at the written plan that gets, you know, that gets approved by the board. And so yes, that would have been one of my questions if it was, it was in there. I don't think it's the state of Wisconsin's defined low. And I would, you know, I was worried that people might say, okay, you're pretending you might go back to full onsite, but you, you hid that with an unattainable metric.
I guess, and I'd offer that, again, my intentionality behind this was that we weren't intending to usurp any power of the board. And so our intention would have been that when we arrived back at the board table to say, we believe it's time to move from offsite to blended, just as we're telling you right now that we think we know what the metric is to make that change. When we came back, we would also then offer a metric that would move from blended to onsite. And again, we would seek approval from the board for that too.
Can I, can I ask quickly? I just want to make sure I understand what we're voting on tonight. So Christina, your motion was regarding, your motion was regarding to us starting virtual in September. Are we voting on the entire plan or are we voting on how we will start in September based on the benchmark that we've been given by our health community?
Yeah, I don't know if that's for me or for Steve, but the way that I understand it is that we're, we're voting to start the year virtually based upon the recommendations of the health community and the information that's been provided. And also in the motion, it says, we will look at this and discuss it at least every two weeks. Steve is also committed to sending us updated data every single week so that we are up to date. We have the ability to call special board meetings. So if we wake up tomorrow and the numbers are suddenly down to zero and the virus has mysteriously disappeared, we could call an emergency meeting on Thursday and say, I pass a motion to start in person. So I, I personally don't understand why we need to have metrics on how to go from blended to in-person right now if we've already committed to looking at this on a week-by-week basis to try to get back to all students in the classroom as soon as possible. And so I believe that's what we're voting on tonight is simply to start in person or start.
Thank you for.
And I just offer to Dawn and Eric to extend on that. You know, again, being new and only been a few board meetings in. And if you recall, a few weeks ago, we had the conversation about whether or not the board should vote on this. And one of the things I shared with you is that the Department of Public Instruction was pretty specific about that, that this did not require board action. And through our conversation at the table and afterwards, it was determined that board action was appropriate and I certainly support that. So then I didn't want to get too far out in front of ourselves and develop a plan that had a lot of autopilot pieces in it that really wound up deferring to administration when in fact it might be a better choice to have board action. So as I'm trying to strike that balance, I would. uh, I, I prefer to err on the side of caution, if you will, uh, and, and make sure that I've got the appropriate direction from the board, uh, before we take any unilateral action.
Christina?
Yep, I just wanna comment and then finish up with my two other questions, so I think that's what makes this issue so incredibly complicated, right? You can plan all day and have these really clear metrics, but then information changes rapidly, it's like trying to put a puzzle together that the puzzle pieces change, and they're all the same color. So, you know, I, I think this is where we've got to have some, have a discussion on metrics of what is best and what we have now. We've got to hold each other accountable and come back to this information rapidly if needed, we've gotta have open lines of communication, and to Eric's point, I think um, a good plan is solid, but we also have to be able to respond quickly to updated information, and there is, you know, I don't really like to say, you know, just trust us, because that doesn't really mean anything to the community, but there is going to be a level where we're gonna have to work together over time to just respond to when information comes forward, so, um, I have two other questions, so, Steve, we heard a lot yesterday about, uh, students and families receiving, uh, special education services and I, and that, you know, have an IEP. This was something that I talked a lot about in the spring, families were very frustrated, so can you please, and I know, you know, we're gonna vote on this motion tonight, we'll see how it goes, but can you please talk about what that's gonna look like for the fall and how it's going to be different for families and students?
Sure, so one of the things that, uh, will happen immediately after a, a board decision, uh, is that, uh, our special education staff will immediately work to reconvene IEPs, because, uh, regardless of which choice is made, um, it's gonna look different than, than last year, um, in August of two thousand nineteen, um, or any of the, the recent, uh, annual meetings, uh, that parents had regarding their IEPs, uh, and so, uh, there'll be a need for, uh, those meetings to take place so that, um, we can determine the appropriate delivery of services. Uh, one of the things that we learned as part of this process is that we have students, um, for whom that offsite model simply didn't work. I, I've used some examples that, that people definitely understand, things like occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech and language therapy, uh, that we, uh, think would be best delivered onsite, uh, we also have some students that participate in some programs, I, uh, some of our students that are in our autism programs, uh, who have, uh, indicated that they really need onsite assistance, uh, and so our, uh, pupil services support team um, has been working to determine how we can provide those services in a safe environment, um, for those students, um, who will need to be onsite, and that would be determined through their IEP, through their individualized education plan, that is, that includes both teachers, parents, and in some case, students, um, as they go through and make those decisions, uh, but again, it's that opportunity to make sure that, uh, we're able to meet needs onsite that can't be met offsite.
And, sorry, a follow-up, um, will, are you committed to working with the Special Education Council through the district to help best inform your decision-making, uh, moving forward with IEP services?
Absolutely, I had the opportunity to meet with them, I'm trying to get my weeks mixed up here, I think it was two weeks ago, might have been last week, um, had the opportunity to meet with them, they meet monthly, uh, and so, uh, that's a, a meeting that I've added to my calendar to make sure um, that I understand where we're at as we walk through the process and get some of that direct feedback.
Thank you, and then my last question, I know there was a document attached to our agenda, um, about supervision, so this is going to fall on the back of working families, single-parent families, we heard from them, some of the comments quite emotional last night, and even families that, you know, can both work from home, this is incredibly challenging. So can you talk about the district's commitment, I know we don't have the specifics yet, but the commitment that we have to ensuring that we don't have five, six, seven-year-old kids left home alone, to no fault of the family, but just because parents have to work and they may not be able to adjust their schedule?
Sure, uh, so I think many of you are aware, we're part of a, a subgroup through the Department of Public Instruction called the Big Five, um, it gives us the opportunity to meet regularly, um, with the superintendents from Madison, Racine, Kenosha, Milwaukee, Green Bay. Uh, so at our last meeting, uh, that was actually a, a central topic of communication, um, was providing both, uh, wraparound services, uh, if we had some onsite instruction, uh, and if we didn't have onsite instruction, because, uh, I believe now all four of them have committed to starting virtually, uh, then, uh, what would, uh, wraparound services look like, uh, when education was in a virtual environment? Uh, and so about to hear a little bit about what Milwaukee's doing and what, uh, Madison is doing, brought that back here, um, had a conversation with our folks about, um, some of those, uh, support agencies that provide wraparound services for our students, um, so the questions we've been asking are, um, do they have the capacity onsite at their facilities, um, to extend those wraparound from before and after school to during the day? Um, also had conversations with them about where they're providing those services onsite on our campuses, can they also expand those, um, to, uh, cover daytime uh, support for parents, and then, uh, the other thing that we've been talking to them about is expansion. So do they have the capacity, do they have the ability with their organization, uh, to either expand onsite at their own facility, and if not at their own facility, either other facilities in town, or perhaps inside our, uh, buildings? Um, we obviously some challenges inside our buildings because, uh, depending on how we structure those services, rather than falling under the auspices of the Department of Public Instruction, they fall under the auspices of the Department of Health Services, they've got some different rules for that, um, but, uh, those agencies that we work with, our partners have been very creative, um, they're definitely willing to work with us on that. Uh, we think through that process, uh, we can expand the number of spots that are available, um, for parents to receive assistance.
Sorry, Laura, I have a follow-up real quick, so Steve, I've had some families, when they're asking about this, they'll say, well, if you're gonna do that and have super, supervision, or how is that different than just them going to school? So why not just have them go to school if you're going to do that, can you explain the difference?
Sure, so if you haven't had, uh, kids in our, uh, wraparound programs before, uh, that might, uh, might be, uh, an, an area that's unfamiliar with you in terms of how that's structured, uh, so we tend to use common areas for those, so think gymnasiums, cafeterias, uh, they allow certainly some physical distancing in there, uh, DHS has specific requirements in terms of square footage, uh, per pupil, and so uh, that's gonna look obviously different than a classroom does, um, with this current environment, those, uh, uh, square footage requirements are changing, and so that gives them the opportunity to comply with those DHS requirements, uh, and, uh, serve the students in those common areas in our schools, um, so that's gonna look different than, than it would be if you had kids in the classroom, uh, like, uh, we experienced and we were able to show you on the video today.
Thank you.
Christina, one thing, and I'll just follow up, I talked to the executive director from the Boys and Girls Club today, because they've been serving kids this summer, um, they've been operating on a ratio of one to nine all summer, um, and minimizing the, obviously, any interaction between those different pods, so just another example of how that's different than, than maybe what we would be able to do.
Thanks, Eric, I appreciate that.
Yep, Laura, go ahead.
Um, just to build on that a little bit and to widen, widen that, um, I, you know, I know we've talked a lot about our community partners, and our community partners are committed to children in our community, um, they've, they've done amazing work, and I know that we're growing that, and we're gonna continue to grow that, we need it, we need every bit of it. Um, but I, I guess my, my thoughts on that, uh, if we can expand it even more into, into our community as lar, at, at large, that, that our families are going to need, no matter how we vote tonight, they're going to need employers and businesses in this community to, to, um, to offer them flexibility and to show empathy for the situations that, that we, that we find ourselves in as a community right now. And I'm hoping that if people, um, in positions of, of leadership are watching this right now, that they will, um, give that some consideration, because it's going to be desperately needed. Um, our families are in crisis, our community is in pain, and, and as we, you know, head back to school, um, there's a lot of fear and anger that are, that I, that we hear them in all of these emails that we've had, um, uh, a lot of, uh, a lot of trepidation, so I'm hoping that if, you know, I think it's essential that, that employees in our area adapt and offer that flexibility if possible, and I, I know that might seem really challenging, because businesses have to be viable, um, but I think that unity as a community is gonna be really essential if we're gonna come out on the other side of this pandemic intact, um, as a community, and I, I, I just hope people will give that some thought, um, so, I, I just wanted to offer that.
Maybe one thing I could add to that, too, because I think that we recognize that we wanna be a part of a solution, and we've heard from parents that, uh, have said, hey, uh, I may be able to find a reliable, uh, location for childcare during the day, um, but if the expectation is that I'm gonna go to work all day, my kids are gonna go to childcare all day, and then I'm gonna try to pack an entire school day, um, into that after-dinner hour before my kids go to bed, that's an unreasonable expectation, we certainly understand that. Uh, that group that's working on this issue, uh, has been, uh, being, uh, real out-of-the-box thinkers, if you will, they're looking at it saying, if our teachers are busy teaching during the day, um, we've got many, many high-quality support staff, uh, paraprofessionals, special ed paraprofessionals, I, other certified, uh, staff who may not have a teaching responsibility, uh, and so the question they've been asking is, um, can these staff members, um, through outreach, uh, help those organizations, help those children, uh, stay engaged with teaching and learning during the day when they're in that childcare setting, um, so that they can participate in that online learning, uh, so that when they come home in the evening, uh, parents aren't trying to pack an entire school day into that, uh, after-dinner hour, so, uh, certainly not, uh, uh, fully, uh, planned out, ready to go, but that's definitely a part of that process that that team is working on.
I think it's gonna be really important going, going forward that we, we're, um, we show each other and our fellow citizens some grace and some kindness and patience and all those old fashioned virtues that, um, that we take for granted, but in a crisis situation become incredibly important. Um, and our district can't do it all, we can't, we can't provide everything for everybody, so, um, our, our teachers are, are amazing and our staff is amazing, I think we can all agree on that, but, um, they're human and, uh, we're gonna need a whole entire community to, um, to come together to, to make it through to the end.
Thanks, Laura, uh, go ahead, Rhonda, and then we'll go to Noah.
Uh, I have a few questions I want to ask about this, this conversation in general, so, um, Steve, you had said that you had asked the community partners if they have the capacity, you had asked if they can provide services on their premise, or on our premises, right? And do they have the ability to expand? When will we know the answers to this, because personally, speaking for myself, knowing everything that's been out there, that has come to us in emails, people that were speaking, the phone calls I've had, when will we know that this is even an option, because I feel like that's something that matters with this vote for me, for me personally.
Understood.
When do you anticipate, when do you anticipate that they would know that, and and do you believe that they could actually handle a pretty large capacity, and who's gonna determine who the kids are that are prioritized to be able to go into these programs? Who actually gets to determine that, because I think it's a pretty relative, um, situation for kids who are in need of support, I think we could probably all agree that that could be a very large percentage of our district, especially when we talk about working families, and what's the criteria going to be when we ask for students who are in need for extra support in general? Because right now, um, I don't know how that's even possible, and if we don't have some sort of an idea of if it is possible before we're voting on this, I'm not sure what we're waiting for, and what are they waiting for, it, can you explain more about that?
Sure, so, uh, our team reached out, uh, to them, they've engaged in this dialogue, uh, but, uh, obviously, that, this isn't something that they have uh, ramped up or planned for, because, uh, they're waiting for the board, uh, to determine, uh, what their next step is in terms of either an offsite or a blended model, because, uh, if we're running a blended model, uh, obviously, we're not gonna have space in our schools, because we're gonna have kids in there on a rotating basis, and so that takes away those common spaces that they would use, um, to provide support, so, uh, they've had those conversations, um, those partners are, are interested, they're ready, willing, and able, uh, to determine what their next steps are, uh, but absent, uh, actually knowing uh, what type of space is available, uh, they don't have the ability to plan for that right now, uh, so many of those decisions and and, uh, much of the content that you just referenced, uh, is something that they're, they're literally, uh, ready to go in terms of initiating that tomorrow, uh, but absent, uh, knowing what kind of spaces are available, um, they haven't moved forward with that process.
Do you anticipate families having to pay for these services?
To be honest with you, I haven't, we haven't gone far enough in that, uh, into it for me to know that.
I, I, okay. Um, here, here's.
Sorry, Rhonda, in that one document, it, there was some costs associated, uh, that was outlined, and so it looked like something that, that could be some in the district, but I didn't know if you saw that.
I did, but I, I, again, this is another one of those things that really matters to me when I think about, um, creating more hardships for families. Right, so, but it does matter to, to me before I take a vote, um, do you feel you have enough staff who would be willing to work in a blended model?
I, well, not knowing how many students, uh, we would have onsite or offsite, uh, it would really depend, if you had all of our elementary students um, elect to come to school, uh, we'd have to hire four hundred-plus teachers, um, in order to do that, but the reality is we don't have enough space, uh, to actually place those teachers, so if all of our elementary kids decided that they were going to come to school in a blended model, um, we would have to have all of our high school kids, uh, offsite in order to free up enough space to put our elementary kids, uh, in the classrooms, and then we'd need to hire four hundred teachers, and to be honest with you, we don't have the money to hire four hundred teachers, so, uh, it really would depend on what the mix of, of onsite and offsite, um, students is in a blended model.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, what you're saying is there really, you really cannot realize the blended model, I mean, just, uh, hear me out, because I wanna understand. So if we're into an offsite virtual start in September, and we're looking at getting criteria on a regular basis, and somehow something, you know, things are going well, and we have to come together to decide if we're going into a blended model, are we going to have to hire four hundred teachers to make that happen?
Well, we don't presume that everybody's gonna return to class, uh, the moment that we move from, uh, an offsite to a blended model, uh, and so part of the planning process is determining, uh, how best to meet the needs of those students who do come back, um, and the, the hardest part of the process is going to be, uh, when you're in flux between blended and onsite, uh, certainly as we get closer to onsite, we presume that more and more of the students will elect to come back to school, uh, and hopefully also during that part of the process, uh, if we see a, a reduction, uh, in the community spread, uh, that may very well change some of those criteria. Uh, you know, we looked at, uh, spacing classrooms out from six feet to three feet, um, and if, if the, uh, if we start to see that, um, uh, rate of community spread, uh, decrease significantly, and we're therefore able to, uh, uh, decrease the, uh, spacing distance in the classroom, that significantly increases our capacity, and so part of our thought process is, as we move from, uh, the blended model to the onsite model, some of those metrics that the CDC, uh, and healthcare professionals have provided to us are going to change, um, and that change is gonna allow us to have a higher capacity uh, for students in the classroom, so we think those things will come together, um, and then we think that then we will have the ability, uh, to do that. Uh, today's per, current model with the, the requirements that they're talking about with the six feet of spacing, uh, our geography limits us to how many children we can put in the classroom, and if we have to find a space for every single elementary child, uh, then that's where we start to struggle with having enough staff.
Okay, so, but, again, just so that I'm, I'm clear and I'm understanding what you're saying, in order to go from an offsite virtual model, let's say, let's say maybe in November, just throwing it out there. In order to go from an offsite virtual model, let's say, let's say maybe in November, just throwing it out there. Do you believe we would have to hire 400 teachers?
No, I don't. I said, if we were to do it today, uh, with the community spread that we have and the recommendation that we have from the CDC, that's the position we'd be in today.
Oh, so just today? Okay. So, but I think that's a really important point, right? Because the vote is to accept the recommendation that is for an offsite virtual model. Where people are weighing, and, and I don't even think families understand that, right? So if, if, if the board, let's say the board doesn't accept that, then we are simultaneously saying we believe we can hire 400 teachers.
No, we'd come back to you and say, uh, in order to accommodate, well, first of all, we'd have to reach out to the parents and say, uh, how many of you want to be offsite? Because remember we offered parents, uh, the opportunity to be offsite as long as they wish to do so. Uh, we know that we've already had, uh, 10% of our parents, um, that have said that they, uh, plan to be offsite. Uh, regardless of what we do. And so we would need to ascertain just exactly how many parents would send their students to school. Uh, once we know that, then we know how many teachers that we need, you know, how much physical space we need in each building. Uh, and from there, uh, we would then, uh, be able to tell you where we stand.
Um, and do you believe that you would have had more, um, families sign up for that off, the, the offsite, um, option? If there would have been more of an explanation of the actual program?
Oh, sure. Yeah. Well, I don't know if I say we'd have more, um, but, uh, obviously more information is always better as part of decision making. I don't know if that would have, uh, had more people sign up for that, uh, initial run. Um, but I'm sure that they would have been better informed.
Um, I've been hearing, um, from a lot of people that they would have, if they would have known a little bit more about it, they maybe would have committed to it.
Mm-hmm.
And, and is that still, if the board votes tonight to accept the offsite virtual recommendation, then people signing up, I think the deadline was the seventh of August, then that doesn't, it doesn't apply. People cannot choose. So tonight, if we accept that, because that's been confusing as well. Um, parents have been thinking they can still choose.
Yes.
So in, in the blended model, can they choose virtual?
Yes.
They can.
Yes.
It can be fully open and they can stay virtual. Some families have indicated they want to do that for the year, just health conditions, whatever, we're just going to let them.
So even, but even in a blended model, families could choose virtual.
Yes. So, uh, maybe the best way to think about it is, uh, if you were part of that 10 plus percent that said that you would prefer to be in an offsite model, uh, regardless of which choice you as a board make. Whether you, uh, accept that recommendation and start offsite, uh, whether you decide to vote for blended or whether you decide to make an alternate motion, uh, and start with every child in every day. Uh, those, uh, students, uh, whose families have selected offsite, they would be able to start offsite. And we've promised them that they will be able to stay offsite, uh, as long as it fits their educational needs.
Okay. Um, I also have a question. So do you have the ability or would you? If the, let's say the board voted one way, they didn't accept your, um, recommendation. Do you have the ability to overturn that yourself?
Oh, absolutely not. No, that's, uh, that's why we brought it to the board.
Okay. Someone asked, and I wasn't sure. I didn't think so, but, um, that was another question. I also want to know what you think about when it comes to the gating criteria. Do you believe we're handcuffed by the amount of testing that's available?
I don't know the answer to that Rhonda. That's a good question, but I don't know the answer to that.
Isn't that an important thing to consider?
Again, you know, our, our expertise with the teams that we have in place is really about how to deliver teaching and learning. Um, and we've really relied on our, uh, uh, our external healthcare providers, uh, in the Department of Public Health to tell us when it's safe to have our kids in class. Um, so we, we really rely, uh, on those folks, uh, to help us, uh, know when it's safe. Uh, to have children back, when they tell us it's safe, we'll be ready to have them back. Um, in the meantime, then it's our, our job to, again, determine how best to provide educational opportunities for them offsite.
Um, okay. I have a question about food delivery, um, in general. So last spring, we had a lot of families who were not working because of the stay at home order. And so there were a lot of families able to come and drive and pick up food. We know that that is not the case today because a lot of people are back to work. Most people are back to work in fact. So knowing that, what is, I'm, I'm really interested in because this is, we know there are, there's parental insecurity. We know there is food insecurity out there. On any given week, I have, I have sometimes, uh, my daughter's friends who end up in my home because of these reasons. So I have seen this firsthand. I'm wondering about the options that will be out there. Because it is very likely that a lot of families will not be able to drive to pick up food. Especially if they're working. And so my concern is that there are going to be a lot of kids who are not eating food. We were not very flexible in the spring when it come, came to teachers being able to deliver food. So I'm wondering what type of variance is going to happen when it comes to our staff being able to, to reach families? Because again, you might, and we know this, there might, there may be kids home by themselves and they're six, seven, eight years old because of this decision. And so those kids are not going to be able to potentially walk five blocks to get food. So when we talk about safety, I think this is a very important consideration. What are we willing to do? Cause this is an important part of my decision as well. For those families who will not be able to drive to the, to the sites to, to receive food. And how committed are you, and I'm asking you personally, how committed are you to making sure that our district is more flexible? When it comes to teachers, knowing these students, having relationships and being able to reach them with food delivery, because we were not flexible last time at all.
Well, again, not having been here, I, I, I'm not sure I can speak to the past, but I can tell you that, uh, in working with that particular, uh, group on the, in the operations area, um, they are committed, uh, to multiple opportunities, uh, to ensure that kids are, are being fed. Um, so they're talking about those opportunities as you described, to come to central locations to pick up food. Those may or may not be our facilities. They may be other, uh, places in town that have been identified as, uh, better places, uh, more accessible for people to pick up food. And then they're also committed to that idea of delivering food. Uh, so that, uh, as you indicate, whether it's, uh, uh, it could be teachers, it could be building administrators. It could be, um, uh, advocates, it could be, uh, people in the community, uh, that work with, uh, populations in need that are helping us identify, um, who those kids are and who those families are. Uh, but they are 100% committed, um, to going beyond simply providing food for pickup, but also providing delivery options, uh, so that we can get food out into the community to people who need it.
Do you, do you see teachers as being part of that equation?
You know, if teachers are teaching, they probably, uh, aren't necessarily going to be part of that delivery because they may very well be tied up, uh, during the day, um, instructional responsibilities. Um, but again, as I shared before, we've got, uh, a great support staff. Uh, this might be an opportunity for us to repurpose, um, some of our support staff, uh, to provide that, uh, that function, uh, in the community. Uh, but, uh, I know our food service team, uh, has really stepped up and said that this is something they can do.
Well, but there were, and I'm not actually asking for teachers to be instructed to do that, but there were several teachers who wanted to and were denied the possibility. So I'm hoping, I'm suggesting, I'm asking that we are more flexible with those. Because I think we, we, we're going to have to be.
Now, well, I think as Laura said before, right, it's all hands on deck. Uh, and so I think what we really want to do is we want to make sure that we take advantage of, of, uh, uh, those people whose, uh, passion is, is directed towards supporting our students.
Rhonda, I'm going to jump in just to make sure that we can keep everyone engaged. I want to make sure you get all your questions asked, but I also want to make sure that the rest of the board members, uh, have a chance. Uh, Noah, you had a question a few minutes ago. Do you still remember what it is?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I have a, um, board, and sorry, uh, first, they're similar. First one is lab science courses, second courses, et cetera. What are those going to look like and will they even still be offered?
So first of all, let me, uh, thank Noah. He, uh, took some time out of his weekend, uh, to talk to me and, and share some of the feedback that he's getting from students. I really appreciate that. Uh, and one of the things that we had talked about was, uh, what about some of our more specialized courses? Uh, you mentioned, uh, science classes and labs that go along with them. Um, we also talked about, uh, things like our career trade and tech ed classes, um, that may have some very unique, uh, educational requirements, uh, that can only be met on campus. Uh, so right now our ed team is looking at those, uh, to determine if there are opportunities, um, for us to bring students on campus in smaller numbers. Uh, and, uh, they certainly don't have, uh, that planned out yet. Uh, but, uh, that was something Noah, from our conversation, I was able to take back, uh, to the team. Uh, I'm going to have a chance to go over later this week and take a look at the aquaculture program over at Southwest. Um, as I shared, no, I don't want, uh, kids digging ponds in their backyard. Uh, so how can we actually create opportunities, um, for students who are in those programs, uh, to continue in those programs? For many of our kids that, that may be on track to graduate this year, um, this may be their last opportunity to complete some of those. Uh, and we want to make sure that, that where, uh, possibly we provide those opportunities. So we don't have any answers for that yet Noah, but that's high on the top of the list of that academic team.
If I could, um, I'd also just like to throw in there because it's also been said to me, performance courses, so music, the Fine Arts Academy and things like that. Those have also been similar concerns because, uh, we tried the pledge of allegiance over Zoom, uh, a few meetings ago. And with a whole orchestra. Yeah. So, um, and that was that. And then I'm going to say the metric word, I'm sorry. Um, there's, in this motion, there's no metric for in person. But then the graph, when I look at the plan that was released, has like a cycle of all three, depending on what COVID looks like. But at, at the end of the day, there's nothing in, there's nothing in the motion. And I, I have a high, um, I look at the, what's written down significantly. And so I don't know what this is looking like to students, uh, who have read the agenda. They said this is an indefinite postponement of, in, of, uh, the school as it used to be. And a probably pretty close to indefinite postponement of, uh, even a blended, a blended model from what's here. I don't, I don't see, I don't see school coming back in, to in-person learning of any sort. Um, happen, happening easily. And certainly not when there's no hard trigger in it. There's no, there's nothing where we can say, okay, the math works out here. Or there's nothing where we can say, oh, the date has been reached. So now we can come in person. So the public, the students have no idea what this is. And this looks like an indefinite timetable. Yes, I'm not really asking a question. I'm just kind of throwing it out there. That from what this looks like to students is that school's never coming back. That's what that looks like. That's the perception, whether that's true or not, defend that if it's not, but that's what it looks like. Thank you.
So first of all, I'll go back to your fine arts question. So one of the things that the academic team is looking at is, um, in particular, what we consider are specials, art, music and PE. Um, how we have the opportunity to continue to keep students engaged in those areas, uh, even if they're in a virtual environment. And, uh, our staff have been exceptionally creative about that. They think they've got, um, some good opportunities, uh, for kids to, uh, continue. They actually even, uh, we started with the idea that we were going to postpone introductory band. Uh, just because they were struggling with the idea of, um, how kids choose instruments, how they get fitted, et cetera. They've actually got a workaround for that and have already come back and said, if we start not, in an offsite model, they want introductory band to start right away, day one. Uh, and so I've got a, a great deal of faith in their, uh, creativity and their ability to, to figure out a way for us to do fine arts. Uh, including fine arts extracurriculars, uh, in a virtual environment. Um, and in, in regards to your last one, you know, I'll go back to the, the comments I offered earlier. Um, we really, uh, thought about this in terms of a staged process. Uh, I can certainly understand from your perspective without seeing, um, something for that final stage. Um, that the appearance may be that there is no, uh, plan to return. And, and I would just tell you that that certainly is not the case. Uh, we were simply looking at, uh, step one to step two. Uh, and that's the detail that we drill down on for this one. Uh, our next step then is to do step two to step three, which is, uh, the blend into the virtual. Uh, we're blessed with about a hundred people that are working on those eight teams. Uh, and their next, uh, uh, work product, uh, is to actually then build out that next transition. Uh, they simply just didn't do it at this point in time because of, of the fact that we only have four weeks to work on it.
Christina?
Thanks. Uh, this question is for Terry. Um, Terry, can you talk a little bit about, um, some of the struggles? If we were to go back blended or in person in September, that we could face with our subs, with people getting sick, um, with supervision of classes? Um, I know we've historically, at the, at the state national level had a sub shortage. So how would this exacerbate that already existing issue?
Thank you Christina. We are continuing to work with our substitutes to, um, gauge their interest in continuing to serve the district. We do that every year. Um, we several weeks ago sent out a, um, substitute survey. And, um, we have HR associates reaching out to our current substitutes, um, speaking personally with them as well. Understanding how important, um, that is, that topic is. And there are a variety of factors that impact, um, the substitute shortage nationally as well as state and, and locally. And we've been doing a lot of proactive things to, um, increase our, um, sub availability and utilization. This absolutely will have an impact. Um, we do use, many of our subs are former district teachers. So they are retired and either completing their emeritus or they are choosing to fill in for long-term, um, substitute positions. So obviously, um, the pandemic will have an impact on their willingness and availability to be able to come in. We also have experienced already impacts on our workforce relative to the, uh, following the health department and the need to quarantine both for themselves, having a positive COVID test or for a spouse or someone living in their home who may have, um, actually been exposed in another community employer. So that impact goes, you know, both directions where we have an impact on, um, with our employees and their impact on their spouses working out in the community. And the same back, um, in, in the other direction. So the potential there is that an employee could be off themselves for a 14-day quarantine. And then an additional 14 days while their, um, significant other or family member in the home is quarantined. And the impact, um, could actually extend over, uh, a number of days.
And thank you Terry.
Can't they test and get out of quarantine?
We have about 25 different scenarios relative to COVID exposure. And, um, I would really encourage looking at that carefully because each situation is very different, um, depending on the, um, close, closeness of exposure, depending on the testing timeline, depending on a number of factors. So again, we're following the advice of our healthcare and medical professionals in the Brown County Health Department, et cetera. So, you know, there's a number of, of situations that would have an impact, um, on that answer. And we did recently communicate that out with all staff. Um, and I believe we're up to about 25 different scenarios that, you know, we could talk through. So.
But you're not saying that you can be quarantined because of a potential exposure, test negative and return to work? That is not a for sure thing?
There's a number of factors that would impact that Andrew, um, depending on how many members there are in the household, when there's symptoms, um, if they have symptoms, if they don't have symptoms. Um, so, uh, you know, again, the document outlines a lot of different scenarios. And, and we have a team that's working through these, um, case by case and really looking at, um, all of the impacts. Melissa, do you, because I know you've been very closely involved with those as well. Do you have added information that would be helpful?
Sure. Thank you Terry. Andrew, we shared that communication that went to staff. Uh, I believe it was last week with respect to those different scenarios. So you could go through those scenarios and if you have any additional. So you could go through those scenarios and if you have any additional questions, give me or Terry a call. But in working in partnership with the Brown County Public Health Department as well as our other community healthcare providers, we've outlined all those various scenarios. And there will be times when an employee tests negative for COVID, but a member in the household may be positive or the individual has come into close contact with someone else who's COVID positive and they will still be required to quarantine based on the requirements of the health department and our public, I'm sorry, and our community healthcare providers. But after you review those 25 scenarios, if you want to give us a call, I'd be happy to walk those through with you.
I have two additional questions, sorry. And within that scenario, can't remember, is there an exemption for the number of hours a sub can work in a year? Because isn't there, isn't that currently exist, Terry?
I'm not sure what you're referencing. It would depend on their licensure. It depends on the length of time that they're able to sub in one particular position. They must have license in that area if it exceeds a certain number of days. So that impacts the ability to long-term sub. And it also would vary based on their emeritus. So we are required to have a certain number of days break in their service before they are eligible to come back to substitute for us.
Thanks, Terry.
Talking about changing that, but they have not done so yet.
I was just going to offer, that's one of those things that we brought to the DPI last week and they said that they would see what they could do in their rulemaking capacity. As Terry said, that might be something that doesn't require state legislative action for them to waive that, that sit-down period.
I just have one last question. Steve, you had mentioned saying, I think you said 10%. When we were talking about the number, percentage of staff that could put the whole system in jeopardy if they are to get sick, perhaps even one specific building or the entire system because of supervision and licensing. So can you talk a little bit about that? Because I thought that was a really important point.
Sure. That came up when we were at the building and I can't remember, I apologize. I know somebody asked the principal about that. And she was describing scenarios where in the past, if you had somebody who wasn't able to come to work in the morning, you had to leave at the end of the day, there was always the opportunity for us to double up. It's certainly not ideal to send students from one classroom into another classroom, but it ensured that we had certified supervision of those students and that they were able to continue with some kind of teaching and learning, either at the beginning of the day or the end of the day. Obviously, that's not going to be possible in this kind of scenario because we need to be physically distanced and we can only have so many students in a room. Then you would turn to the other certified staff in the building and have them step in, the principals, counselors, maybe specials teachers, et cetera. And then beyond that, you run into a problem because if you simply have other adults in the building that are standing in, they're not certified. That doesn't meet the Department of Public Instruction requirements. And so the question that was asked and that she was helping us answer was, how many additional certified staff do you have in the building who could fill that role? And the number, the kind of the rule of thumb that we've been looking at out there is in any given building. If you reach a 10% absenteeism rate, we're going to start to lose having the actual appropriate number of adults in the building to supervise the students in the classroom. And so when you get to that point, we're in an unfortunate situation where do we actually have to curtail education in that building for the remainder of the day? And then are we actually contacting parents and sending kids home in the middle of the day? Certainly as a worst-case scenario, as we're trying to figure that out. There's the possibility that on an individual basis, we could scramble certified staff from other buildings to help out with that. But if that starts to happen in more than one building at a time, we're going to lose the ability to keep up with that. So right now, and I've actually had this conversation with supervisors around the country. And this 10% rule is kind of that rule of thumb, if you will, that's out there that if we have that level of absenteeism of certified staff, we start to get into a challenge in actually running school.
Okay, I'm sorry. I have a follow-up question. I don't know if this data exists right now because we're so, we're learning and collecting so much new data on the daily. Is there any modeling yet that exists with, when you open up schools with the rate of infection and positive cases, how quickly that 10% threshold would be met?
I haven't seen that yet. I can tell you that that I'm really worried about the rate of spread when you have teachers together. I don't know if anyone saw the story that came out of Georgia. Gwinnett County just had an enormous challenge. They brought staff back on site and immediately walked up with almost 300 teachers. They had to quarantine for 14 days. They're very close to the start of the school year because they start really early than we do down there. And obviously, that puts in jeopardy the ability for them to get school started because now these folks have to sit off for 14 days. So those are the kinds of things that we looked at. So not only the student safety, but again, staff safety is a big concern for us and then having adequate staff. You know, if you have, you have 10% of your kids who are out because they wind up being sick, we can accommodate that. When 10% of the staff are out, that's where our struggle starts.
Thank you.
Christina, I would just add that I had conversations today with our reps from First Student and from Lemurs and asked very similar questions about bus drivers, already short of bus drivers. You know, I proposed a scenario where a bus driver brings students to school, maybe gets test results back that they tested positive, can't go and pick up those kids. Would we run in a scenario where kids would get stuck at school without a bus driver? They assured us that they have mechanics and other people in the shop that would be able to drive, so that wouldn't happen. But the shortage of bus drivers is incredibly real and, you know, possibility of students not having transportation to school. It's very easy to imagine that scenario happening quickly.
There is a New York Times map that shows by county in across the country, how many people in the school would be expected to arrive to school infected. I can, I can send the link out to board members. But in Brown County, two people would be expected to arrive infected at a school with 500 people.
Yeah, I think actually Brenda, it's two to four in a school of 500 and four plus.
Oh, yeah. Actually, one to four, it says, range of estimates is one to four. And they're, they're saying two. So and most of, I mean, Wisconsin has varying variability with that. There's one county that we're 15, nine to 30 would be expected to arrive infected. That's in the far northern part of our state. So it's, it's an interesting map. Going to show you where the, you know, the caseload is in across the country, but I'll send that link right now.
Thanks, Brenda. Question for you. Are they then able to look at that data and track it spread or does it not go that far?
I think they're just using, you know, today or, and I assume that they'll modify the map as you move forward. But I think they're just looking at, gosh, I'm not sure. Let me see.
I think they're using the.
If it's burden, do you know if it's case burden or is it infection rate?
I think it's infection rate. I think they're using the National Institutes of Health data and the modeling actually comes out of the University of Texas in Austin.
Yeah. Yeah, here it says the projections are rough guidelines based on the estimated prevalence of the virus in each county. They reflect current levels of infection are likely to change. The estimates assume that children are as likely to carry and transmit as adults, which they admit is maybe a large assumption based on the, you know, we don't have enough data to really know the answer to how, how much kids transmit. Although I know there's one study that showed that 10, 10-year-olds and older transmit the same rate as adults. That study came out of South Korea. And I think there's more, it seems like there's more and more incidences that are questioning more and more instances that are leading us to say, well, maybe kids are more infectious than we, than we think.
Go ahead, Rhonda.
So to that point, is there any reason why Brown County isn't releasing any sort of data around like the age breakdown of the cases? And would it be possible to get that?
You know, that's a good question. I'll be honest with you. I, when I was drilling down into the data set, I didn't look at it in that granularity, but we could certainly, we can certainly see if they've got it recorded on the state database at that level.
Well, and because isn't it right, there's a lot of conversation, debate with that, there's a debate with that, whether kids are more likely to transmit to, so if we actually have data, wouldn't that take care of that argument?
I think that we might know what the infection rates are by age group, but I don't know if that would actually answer the transmissibility issue because I know that they're still doing research on that. So I don't know if we'd answer that.
Well, I guess what, so maybe I'm not saying that correctly. I'll rephrase it. So I'm just wondering if we just have something relative to age in general, especially for elementary students, people, there's always, there's a discrepancy. There seems to be a lot of maybe just miscommunication. I'm not sure what's going on with that. But there's really nothing definitive that's in the county data that I've seen or that's been released. Have you asked about that at all?
I guess I'm not sure what I'm asking about there. When you say definitive, I'm not sure.
So anything related to a breakdown with regards to age? I haven't seen it. Maybe it's been out there. I just haven't seen it.
And that's a good question. Like I said, I don't know the answer to that because we weren't looking at it from that standpoint. We were simply looking at it in terms of the community infection rate and the burden in the community as opposed to looking at it by specific age bands.
Yeah, I just think it's an interesting thing to think about. So I have a question as far as when it comes to paras, new supervisors, monitors, bus monitors, student learning advocates, staff that's in schools typically. What do you see happening with the offsite virtual model with a lot of these staff members, custodians, facilities, staff members? What do you see happening with them?
No, I think it depends on the employment category, but I think that's where we've actually started to get some creative input from those planning teams. So if you're talking about delivery of food, again, that's an opportunity for us to use staff in a different way. If you're talking about our staff being able to do outreach in our community partners to assist with online education on their locations, at their locations rather, again, that's an opportunity for us to look at repurposing staff. So the intentionality right now is recognizing that needs are great. It's how best to deploy those staff people to support our students.
And so when it comes to the, the potential for community partners helping us support students, okay? We heard from a lot of families through email. I know the survey, the survey tends to be labeled as outdated, so let's just, let's just take that off the table, right? Even if we did that, we still know that and every board member received a couple hundred emails from families who are really concerned and struggling with the idea that they do have to go to work. They, they don't have flexibility with their employer because especially if you're in healthcare or in the service industry, there's not a lot of flexibility there. That's just, that's just a fact. So when we have families who are pleading with us to understand that this offsite virtual option is, is just that, is not a solution, it's an option. And this option may in fact solve some problems, but it will create many more for other families. And we know this. They told us. And I think instead of saying that they may be unhappy or they might be angry or they're, they've been accused of whining, the reality is they're desperate, out of options and hopeless. And I want people watching to, to know that I absolutely feel you in that. It's, it's important to recognize that we have many working families who may not make the cut for the community partner onsite support. And it's entirely possible that that will happen because if we could accommodate that many families, we probably would just be having school. So why I'm interested in what I'm supposed to tell these families when it comes to the stories that we've heard. They're both working full-time or it's a single parent who can't quit their job and their kids are now home alone. And it is a fact, and I've gotten crap about this, but I absolutely believe this, that not all kids are safer at home. And that's a fact. And what are we supposed to tell families when they, they don't have answers? This offsite virtual option that is recommended does solve some problems and it gives answers to some families. It absolutely does not do that for many other families. And that matters to me. I'm a single working mother. I feel their pain. I cannot imagine making those decisions where they're probably going to have to just walk off and say, well, good luck today. Or you're going to have to go to daycare or some other facility. And we know a lot of places won't take kids over the age of 12 for all kinds of reasons and state, I believe even state laws. But if these parents don't have options and their kids are ultimately home by themselves and we're, we're looking at attendance and we're, and we're checking the boxes potentially on that. I'm not sure how the grading is going to look. We know the needs are out there for mental health issues. I think I'm the first person to bring that up tonight. It's out there significantly, by the way. I have a really hard time, for me personally, this becomes a public health issue with the pandemic. And another potential and I think likely public health issue with families basically being left with no devices to work through this. Working families should be considered and validated and honored and not shamed because they have to go to work. And if, in case people forget, their salaries pay taxes for the public school district to actually stay afloat. It's literally a lifeline. So I'm, I'm really struggling knowing, and it's, it's not a secret, we've heard from people, we know this, that they are, they're desperate for answers. And I believe in what I struggle with, and believe me, I've had no sleep about this because I feel terrible about that. And I'm not discounting that there's, I'm not a COVID denier. I'm a mask wearer. I wear it everywhere I go in public. I work six to eight hours in one every day. And by the way, there have been teachers who have asked, if you vote against the offsite virtual option, I sure hope you come into my classroom. And I, and I would, I would absolutely do that. I just want to go on record saying that I would do that. Because guess what? I have to go to work every day and I have for three months wearing a mask, mitigating risk because I do not have the option to stay home. I have to provide for my family. And so I, I can imagine that there are a lot of people out there that, that are struggling with this decision because they don't have the option to do that. And I, I just really don't, I'm not hearing enough about what to do for those families. They matter to me a lot. And I think they should matter because they, they are our lifeline. They basically provide the revenue that we need to stay afloat. So I can imagine a lot of outreach from them. I can imagine a lot of outreach from them asking about what to do when this happens. The, the conversation has been that, that the public schools are not childcare. Technically they're not, but realistically, realistically, we know that a lot of kids are safer in schools and that's just a fact. So to diminish it into an argument about the fact that we're not daycare and childcare, no one is saying that. What it is, is families have to get through the day. There will be kids who will not be able to participate if this is completely offsite and virtual. And I, I am not, not hearing what teachers are saying, right? But they have a union to represent them. And they've basically been represented. We need people to represent working families who will not have options. They don't have a stay at home mom or dad. They don't have a friend who could help them. They don't have a support system. And there's plenty of people like that. That's not politics. That's just reality. And so it's very, very difficult for me to sit here and think about, this is not, it is a very difficult decision. This feels like an impossible decision. But I plan to represent those families tonight. And it's not because I don't believe that teachers are not comfortable going back and they don't have a right to feel that way. That is not where I'm at with this. But I was elected by my community to represent them and I fully intend to do that because it, it's like, it's like we forgot what they were discussing. We don't really have anything to offer them. And whether that is our fault or not, it's, it's just, it's true. And I I want to be very clear. I mean, I, I personally don't even feel that we are prepared to do anything other than offsite virtual. I mean, that's just in a nutshell, how I feel about that. I think if we were, if we were actually going to do that, I don't think it would even go well. But I, I want people to know that I've heard you, I feel you. And I honor and validate what you are thinking and saying and scrambling and trying to figure out. And it matters to me because I've yet to hear anything, right? I've heard that there is, they're basically going to be held to the same standards. Yet we're giving, we're taking their safety nets. And what world is that actually equity? I don't see that at all. And I, and I, I'm trying not to be over emotional about this, but
So Rhonda, what do you suggest then? Because, because after going to the school today and seeing what would need to happen, and Laura, to your point earlier about employers, because I've been thinking a lot about that, like, can we go to some of our larger employers and ask them if, you know, the Schreiber's and the Snyder's and to say like, how many of your parents work here? Right? Is there anything we, you could do or that you're not already doing? But
Yes, I would say that.
Hold on, let me finish first. Let me, let me, let me finish for a second. Your point, we're all feeling, we, we all have heard this. We are in an impossible situation right now. There is no good option. Anytime any one of us has come to this board meeting, I believe every one of us can come to the table and say, what is best for kids? There is no, there's no answer tonight on the table. That is what's best for kids and families. This is, this is a failure of the system from the highest level. And I'm not saying that to shove leadership or to the decision off of our plate, because here we are and we have to make it. And this is how it is deeply unfair that school districts over and over again have to basically step up and put everything on the line for their community. And we're going to do it tonight. But the issue is, is that after seeing in a chapel today, Laura, Brenda, I don't know if you guys, what you thought about that. I cried. I was in a fourth grade classroom. I had my mask on and I was sobbing and I thought to myself, I'm glad I have a mask on. I don't want to send my nine-year-old there and it's not a child, it's not a student-centered space. And that's what's so frustrating about it is even if we sent everyone back, which everyone would like to do, it's, it, it's not possible for what it was to come back unless we basically say, we don't really, we're just not going to follow the guidelines. And so I hear you, but what, what is the other option?
Well, I was under the impression that blended was actually an option. I'm hearing it wasn't. I can't imagine that there aren't kids who would probably take that classroom versus what they're experiencing at home. Right? Because that classroom is safety for them. That classroom would also provide them some food and some semblance of somebody seeing that maybe they're being exposed to physical and sexual abuse. Maybe they're being trafficked. Maybe they're actually homeless. Maybe they're going through all these things, right? That we don't have the ability to read when they're not in front of us. And again, it is, right? It's not what the ideal situation is, but again, I'm thinking about the kids who would love to be in there rather than week after week after week after week. And so, but I guess going back to that, I was under the impression that in fact, if the vote fails with the recommendation for offsite virtual learning, that Plan B blended, there are families who still believe that. I'm not hearing that's even viable.
I, here's, listen.
It is viable, Rhonda. We can do anything, right? If you decided tonight that you wanted to send students back onsite, we could take students back onsite. We would just have to be willing to compromise what we've been told is best practice for student and staff safety. So, you know, recognize that our job is to do, your job is to decide. So you decide and you tell us and we do. But what we do is dependent on what we have in terms of capacity. So if tonight you said no to offsite and you said no to blended, we would have to make onsite work. Right? We wouldn't be able to meet the spacing criteria. We wouldn't be able to meet the staffing criteria. We'd be unlikely to be able to meet the health criteria, but we would have to make it work. If you said that you want us to go to blended, we would make that work. We would come back to you in two weeks with a plan that would operationalize it. By then we would hopefully know how many parents would choose to keep their children at home and how many parents would choose to send their children. And that would have a direct impact on how we would implement one. So please don't think that we couldn't do it. We can do it. We just have to recognize that as, as Christina said, we have no good options in front of us. We will have to make compromises regardless of which choice we make.
So Steve, I'm gonna, Rhonda, I'm gonna jump in here for a second. And make an offer to any other board members. If you have anything else that you'd like to say or ask, and then we can come back. Rhonda, you've talked for the last eight minutes straight. I'm trying to keep everyone engaged.
I have a clarifying question about what was just stated.
All right, ask your, ask your clarifying question and then we'll go back to somebody else.
Appreciate that. Thank you. When you said, when you stated that we could make the blended option work, we would have to reduce the CDC guidelines. Is that actually listed in the, in the plan that that's how that would work? So can people pull that document up right now and read that in the blended plan?
Rhonda, we don't know. We don't know because we don't know who would take advantage of the blended plan and who would take advantage of the offsite plan if that option was available to them. So no, we can't give you specifics on which compromises we would have to make. If you made that choice, then we would be able to do so most likely by the time we get to the next board meeting.
But so we, yours, so again, so I'm clear because we will be asked about this, right? By a lot of people, or at least I know I will. That would work. The blended option can work is what you're, was your, is what you're standing right now without hiring 400 teachers. Because that's what I heard you say prior or earlier.
We're telling you that given what we understand from the medical and the health professionals, we know what we need to do to comply with what they say is best practice. But if the board chooses not to move forward with that, makes an alternate choice, then our job is to operationalize that. That's what we do. We would have to make compromises. We would come back to you and share with you what those compromises are. I do think one of the things that you need to understand and that we've talked about internally, and when we talk about the best, bad choices, going to a blended model doesn't help parents who have childcare problems. They still need to find childcare three days a week. So when you talk about the, the heart-wrenching component of this, we know that these two choices put parents in an incredibly difficult situation. And we acknowledge that a hundred percent. I said that right upfront. There are no good choices and every one of these choices has multiple adverse effects on our students, their parents, our staff and the community. Our job is to try to minimize those to the extent that we can. And with one of our guiding principles being health and safety, keeping students and staff safe is our first choice. And that's why we make the recommendation.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump in here. Noah, do you just have a quick question? I'll let you go ahead of me a few, two questions. Go ahead. You can ask two questions. No clarifying, no follow-ups.
No, no, okay. I'm sorry. No, I'm, okay. I have, I have like four minutes of rambling and then I'm done. But I don't know if you, where you want to put me. That's fine. Wherever you'd like.
If you'd like to go in right here, I'll let you go and then I'll go after you.
My apologies. I'm done after this. I'm going to just say everything that I've gotten. I'm going to say everything I have and then I'm done. As to whether school is childcare or not, it's not, it's not meant to be, it's meant to be education, but it serves that secondary role and it's necessary to some people. I have a short little thing right now here and then I will be quiet and let you guys work. I'm speaking today as someone who believes that science must remain apolitical. And when that's not possible, it must be nonpartisan. People are going to make assumptions about my and the board's political leanings based on what we believe is best for students, which is unfortunate. The fact that people are suddenly changing their beliefs about what public education is and how it is supposed to serve this community in the face of this pandemic is another one of the most frustrating things I've seen in looking at this issue. And I know it's worse for you guys who are elected. I'm not a politician and I have no vote tonight. What I am is a student and I have to recommend to the board what I believe is in the best interest of all of my fellow students. I understand the gravity of the situation and the multitude of considerations that the board has to take into account when voting tonight. I've done my best to talk to a diverse group of students within the district and I believe I've done so. I've asked questions and tried to understand why students believe what they did about reopening. From the students I have talked to, I strongly believe that the board's best course of action tonight is to reopen our schools. Virtual learning has not gone well for many students. Speaking for myself, in-person school went far better than virtual did. I am in no way discounting the work that our teachers did in spring. They have had to adapt under extremely high stress and pressure from the public. And I'm saying that from the student perspective, there is generally much more success when meeting in person. I think this is well known and most of the debate focuses on the safety of the schools. I believe that schools will cause some spread of the COVID-19 virus. I think it would be asinine to say that it won't. However, an environment where students are supervised and mostly wearing masks is better than the groups that despite many, it's an overwhelming scientific evidence have formed in the general public anyway. I don't see a feasible solution to this virus. I hope I'm wrong. I really do. But I think the time required to develop a vaccine will actually be in the novel coronavirus will be years and potentially decades. This is not me saying I want to send students, teachers, administrators or parents into a situation that can be dangerous. I don't support that. I'm saying that I think the coronavirus will spread almost the same regardless of what you guys vote tonight. And that closing schools should be used to keep the hospitals from being overwhelmed, not as a permanent measure. It should be used to reduce the rate of spread, not the total spread, which will remain the same. The point that school is going to look different is of course true. That does not mean that it is no longer worth returning to school or that virtual learning is just as good as meeting in person. Every student I talked to said that they would rather be in a school that looks extremely different than the one that they're used to. And then the one that they're used to, to continue with virtual learning. I understand that virtual learning is going to be more refined than the program used in spring. And I know you guys have been hard at work at this. I understand that staff have been working. We recognize that. But no matter how hard everyone works, the main issue remains. Although some students succeed in online learning, many of them don't. If the board votes yes tonight, I do not see a situation where the schools can stay reopened for any real length of time. This is essentially a closure that will last for years. The effects that this will have, especially on parents who rely on schools and somewhere their children can go and be safe and fed during the day are not worth delaying the inevitable spread of this disease. Voting yes looks good. It sounds like the safest option, but I do not see it actually providing for the safety of students anymore than just fully reopening one. I support giving students the option to take school online. Let the families that, let the families take school online if that works for them. But for the families and students for whom that is just not feasible, please reopen the schools. I ask that the board please vote no on this plan and approve students' learning in person. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Noah. I, I have some comments that I'm going to share now. So I've spent my entire career in service to youth and have faced many difficult and courageous decisions with the best interest of children in mind. Although certainly none have been as monumental as, as what's facing us here tonight. In speaking to one of my educational mentors, he said to me, you know, to look into my heart and do what I believe is best for kids and, and I'll be able to stick and sleep with that decision. But what makes this decision so difficult is that both of these options, I believe are bad for children. And it goes against my nature to make a decision that I know is inherently bad for children. And to complicate things, I know that this decision is going to impact every single one of our 21,000 students differently. And so it's hard to think of each of those unique individuals that I have met in, in my different roles in the community and knowing how this is going to impact them. When I sit at the board table, I, I look solely through the lens of a board member and I try to take into consideration our entire system, setting my other personal and professional roles aside. However, in this instance, I cannot remove the lens of the most important role that I play, and that's the role of a father. When I think about the upcoming school year, I think about my son and my daughter who are going into kindergarten in first grade and I feel angry, I feel confused, I feel frustrated, isolated, helpless, sad, just like many of the parents who have emailed us in our community. And I, I feel the exact same way. What I found it most difficult in reading those hundreds of emails is that I agree with almost everything that people have said to us. Children need routine and need social, regular interaction, social interaction. Yes, they do. The infection rate in our community is high. Yes, it is. Online learning is not as effective as in-person learning. That's correct. Kids are unable to social distance and won't wear masks. Yeah. I don't know how I'm going to go to work. Yes. I'm afraid that myself or my child could die. Yes, that's a possibility as well. All of those things are true. In all of the feedback that I've received, there are three points that stick out to me most significantly. First, it's the educational environment that we're proposing sending our children back to. I saw it myself today and I know that it's not the student-centered place that we remember. My daughter's kindergarten class will not have a carpet for story time. There's no kidney tables for small group instruction. There's no warm hugs from her teacher at the start of the end of the day. My son will have no interaction with friends in the lunchroom. There's no high fives from his principal. There's no collaborative projects or manipulatives to help with his learning. The proposed in-person instruction will not be an environment that is conducive to a child's wellbeing. Second, the unstable state of our staffing situation related to the viral spread leaves our system erratic and prone to unannounced and unpredictable shutdowns. If your child's bus driver gets sick, there won't be coverage. If a teacher tests positive, you may find out that your student has to quarantine for 14 days at the drop of a hat and there won't be substitute teachers. And as our superintendent mentioned earlier, if 10% of our staff get in a building are sick, a school would close at the drop of a hat. This level of volatility would cause more disruptions to families because it would come without warning and without an ability to plan. Finally, people point to the low percentage of death in students as a safe reason to open. And, and maybe we don't have all the data on that. And I'm not going to quote an exact statistic, but let's imagine that it's one in 10,000. That may seem low, but it would also mean that two students this year in the Green Bay Public School District will die. And maybe this doesn't mean much to some of you because you think that probably won't be my kids. But in my view, they're all our kids and, and it could be my kids. So it's with a very heavy heart and with a full weight of, of the terrible decision that we have to make tonight, that I'm, I'm going to support a virtual start to the school year. And I realize that other schools in our community can start in person or And I realize that other schools in our community can start in person or, or may plan to do that. A, and I hope they're able to do so successfully and truly it's my hope that we'll get information early in this process, maybe early in September that says. You know, I think we can do this. I, I hope that we start virtually and, and can get out of it as soon as possible and I have hopes that maybe it'll be September or October. Um, but as much as I want our district to serve as a leader. In this instance, I would rather be a follower and see how others are able to respond because we don't know. What this virus does to an open school and I don't want to be the guinea pig that's out there first to find out how it impacts our kids or our staff. And so with everything that everyone has said tonight, I, I take that all into consideration. I've heard all of the feedback and. It breaks my heart that we, we are in this position. Um, but that's my stance and how I plan to vote tonight. Christina?
Thank you for that, Eric. Um, yeah, I just wanted to share a couple of closing thoughts as well. Um, thank you to everyone here tonight, my fellow board members for the conversation and for the work you've given. Um, thank you to Superintendent Merely, to the district staff, to his teachers, to the community for your work for showing up last night at the community forum. Um, I know we are all working exceptional hours and taking on a tremendous amount of responsibility, adjusting to our new normal. Um, similarly to what Eric said, I have never faced a difficult decision like this in my life. Usually I can. Get to a place where I can make sense of it and I can move forward. And this is one of the things that has weighed. The most heavily on me that I can remember. I've spent so much time reading comments from your hundreds of emails, I think 500 emails. Facebook messages and so forth. It's been a tremendous amount of work. Um, I want to start by saying, and I mentioned this earlier, that we face, um, what we currently face is, is a massive failure. And it's kind of an embarrassing failure, right? We're the wealthiest nation in the world, but we can't seem to figure out a rational way to keep our families and districts safe. While we mount a successful public health response to COVID-19. The reality for us on this call for our parents and teachers and kids, it's not our fault. Simply put, as I said, we are put in a impossible situation. Parents are forced to work sometimes in unsafe conditions because we don't have the public infrastructure to support their health and their economic security. Our teachers, many of whom have dedicated their lives to caring for their kids. Their students are afraid of a situation where they might get sick or their students might sick. And they're also afraid of not being there for their students in the school. The worst victims of this situation is our kids. As Eric said, there's no good option. Um, I'll say personally, last year in the spring, my kids did not thrive in the virtual option. Um, my son was quite frankly, a disaster. I remember calling. His teacher and sobbing and saying, I'm not a school board member right now. I'm a, I'm a parent. Because I was so frustrated. Um, and we were lucky, right? I was able to be home with them, to work from home, to be there, but still we struggled. Um, significantly, and I don't know how other families will do it, but I do feel that pain. Um, I've been really shaken by the, the parent feedback that you all have provided. Um, I would love for us to have a way where we could all go back in September and I will fight for that so that we, that can happen as soon as possible. But with Eric, I'm gonna vote for the motion tonight and that there's three big reasons for me why. One is we have to follow the CDC guidelines, the Wisconsin mask mandate and the Brown County Public Health Guidance. Um, that means that what we saw today, it's not going to be the same learning environment. It's not student-centered. It's not. Student-friendly. It's not trauma-informed. It's not, you know, it's not everything that I think makes our district great. And um, as I said, it was really emotional for me because I think we're not perfect, but we've done a lot of great work. To make it student-centered and to train our teachers and it really goes against everything that we. Have been working on, right? From kinesthetic learning, hands-on manipulatives and so forth. The other thing that really weighs on me is, um, if there is an outbreak in our school. It will disrupt entire systems immediately. We'll have to self-isolate teachers and families and students. It could have a rippling effect in other places of employment. Um, and so it really could exasperate an already rising case, a number of rising cases on our, in our county. Um, and then that could really become an issue with our staffing as we talked about earlier. Where people will have to quarantine and again, it could really just not even create an issue with employment with our. Uh, district, but with other employers as well. I want to just close by saying that um, I'm very serious. I have very serious reservations, many of which were shared tonight. Um, I want to commit to the community that these are the things I'm going to continue to elevate and prioritize. And that is students with IEPs and those that need tutoring and special services. Working to ensure that people who need in-person supervisory options for their kids have it. Um, that is a significant priority for working families and single families. Um, ensuring the meal service, ensuring that we have a whole child focused on our virtual learning. Looking at environmental options for classrooms and then of course, like continuously looking at the data to make sure that we make the best decision possible. So that we can move to the, the hybrid and then the in-person model at, um, as fast as we can. I just want to say that, um, you know, this work is exhausting and it's going to require continuous review and accountability, questioning, assessment and replanning. I'm committed to doing it. I think and I know everyone else is as well. I know people will be upset. With the vote tonight and perhaps with me, but it is the one that I feel that I can go to bed. Feeling the best I can, knowing that there's no good option. Um, and I will continue to work as hard as I can for everyone in this district. Thank you.
I know.
Um, well said, Eric and Christina, in the interest of not repeating, um, a lot of what you said, I'll, I'll try to keep my, um. My comment shorter. Um. I agree with many of what you said. This has been an agonizing decision. Um, Christine, I agree with you that the, the people, the, the students and families I'm most concerned about. Um, when, if we go offsite are, are the families who this is going to be such a hardship for. Eric, I agree with you on the um, instability of, of starting um, in person and then having to, with no notice at all, swing back. Um, I also think that we, we just don't know everything about how this virus affects children. There's new research again coming out almost every day. That, that, you know, contradicts other research. So it's, it's just really hard to be confident. Um, at this point and I'm, I'm not interested in, in um, being the guinea pig because in my head and what I, I keep going back to is. We can, like Christina and Eric have described, we can, we can continue to, to replan and move forward and take individual cases and find ways to, for solutions and. Help, help work with uh, students who are having socially emotional struggles and, and all of those things. We, we have the ability to do that. But if we start school and we find out that it causes a big surge in our community, we can't stop that surge. That surge is gonna happen. We've seen that in, in uh, many other states where, who have very, very high infection rates. And, and so I, I'm um, I'm in favor of following the gating criteria. Um, I think that if we meet that criteria, that we give serious consideration to coming back blended. Um, knowing that in another month, we may end up um, back offsite. Um, we may get to the point as a state where our numbers are so high that, that all the schools are, are closed down. Those are all the unknowns in the future, but I feel pretty confident or comfortable, I guess, with choosing. Um, the offsite option to start. Again, everyone's echoed. It's a, you know, none of these choices are good and it's going to affect a lot of people. Um, in bad ways, but I know we have a, we have a great staff. Um, we've had teachers working all summer, um, on their own time. Uh, finding and looking for ways to engage students of online, um, looking for um, just whole hosts of various. Strategies and things to help engage their students better. And I know that that work will continue. Um, they'll continue working harder. We've, well, our virtual instruction will, will be improved. Um, I know our district teams have been working on that all summer. Um, but I, and I guess I would, um, if, if people are having frustrations about what's going on. Um, in, in any of these scenarios, I would encourage you again to reach out. I know I really appreciate all the feedback we've gotten. Phone calls and emails and um, notes on our website and things like that. Um, and I think if you have ideas or concerns, um, you know, this is, this is not something any, any school, anybody alive right now has ever had to deal with. So. Um, I think, uh, you know, ideas, ideas will be welcome. Um, and that's all, uh, uh, I'll stop there. Thanks.
Andrew?
Okay, so um, I guess I'll, I'll save closing comments for the end, but I do have. Yeah, I'm going to have at least, at least one amendment which I have, which I have ready. Um, do you want me to, do you want me to screen? I can read it and if there's any questions, I can screen share it or do you want me to just screen share it?
Um, why don't you just read it and if it feels like it's overly complicated?
Okay, I move, yep, I move to amend the motion by adding the following where grammatically appropriate. And that the district provide and staff extended learning support students, uh, extended learning support sites. For students and families who need them during periods of offsite and blended learning.
So Andrew, that motion just adds that we will do our best to. What, what is the intent of the motion? Just so if you put it.
That we will, yeah, that we will not. Rely on community partners, that we won't uh, wait and see that we are committing. To provide and staff extended learning support sites. I don't know where they are, where they would be. I don't know where, what exactly they would uh. What they would look like. I'm, I'm thinking of the Scottsdale, Arizona model, though much too small, but has. Um, much too small, the number of students it serves, but it's a start. They have uh, 500 spots where. Kids, at least elementary kids can go. Um, should probably wait and see if my, if, see about a second on the motion, then I can explain, I guess, a little more of the rationale.
Is there a second to Andrew's motion?
Second.
Okay, so yeah, I guess we're, one of the things and like, and I'm not saying we didn't. We didn't ask and then things, things move fast and the, you know, things are moving fast. I get that, but. I just, and maybe, maybe I missed something, um, maybe I missed something in what the, where the superintendent was going with, with things before and I, if that's the case, I, I wanna. Hear it again if I missed it. Um, you know, these hundreds of families talking about uh, the devastating circumstances because for. Because the way it's ended up here, there isn't a, there, there isn't a secondary support system when this, when this happens and other. Other countries came up with one and we really, really didn't. So it's, so it falls to us. To look at meeting the needs of families for backup, backup options during this period of, of blended learning. Through a, through a daycare childcare model lens. Right, Eric, you said you talked to, you know, you talked to the Boys and Girls Club. They have, they're doing some great things in groups of. Groups of nine kids with, with one staff and that's, that's good. And if they're able to continue and if they're able to make that full. Full-time or bigger chunks of a day or something. With their one-on-nine staff ratios, that's, that's good, but I think we need to commit to doing something. More to getting much outside of the, the daycare box and, and Steve and I talked about this and there's, you know, there's regular, there's regulatory problems. And issues if you create a daycare, I'm not talking about creating daycares. I'm talking about extended, extended learning support sites. So. I don't know, so we find a, find a spot with some, we find a spot with some open space. We take some offices at DOB where a staff maybe has chosen to. Work remote and I, I, I know that we have staff who are working remote and I'm glad that we're an employer that is being a leader and letting staff work remote. Maybe there's some opportunity there where um, we can have, uh, we could have a pair or someone with kids working. On things for their school with their classmates if we're online or on the, on the other days if they're blended, if they're streaming what their class is doing. This is. And, and I'm gonna, I'm absolutely gonna be working non-stop to be part of the, part of the solution to whatever this is, regardless of um. Regardless of the vote, um, I'm absolutely gonna be there. Uh, someone asked me, are you gonna be there on September 1st if? Schools open and I said whenever they open, I'll be there on the first day following social distancing and proper practices. Uh, I'll just keep it to the amendment for now rather than my closing comments. I, I, I'd like to see what happens with this amendment because. I, I'm gonna sleep better, I'm gonna sleep better tonight if I know that we. We committed to doing more, not, and not just to waiting and seeing what the community partners came up with.
So Andrew, I'll just, I'll respond for myself personally, then I'll go to Christina. Um, you and I talked about this uh. Um, a little bit. I agree with you in theory. Um, and I, I. I, I like the sentiment and I would uh, strongly implore our administration, I know they already have, but I would reiterate it here tonight that. Would want them to pull out all the stops they can to, to try to help families and provide support as much as possible. I know they've already given some of those suggestions. I feel like the, the motion is, is a little bit vague and um. You know, tough for the administration to read and react and what does that exactly mean? So I would be more inclined, I, I would be inclined to deny the motion. Um, but make the point with the administration um, to make an effort there. There, there's a ton of questions that you, that, that in your model. Of, about insurance, uh, who is liable, who, who does it, what, you know, how those sites work? Are we staffing them? Are we guaranteed? So again, I don't disagree with the premise. Um, but right here at the board table, if you're asking me to vote on it without having all of those answers, um, you know, maybe it's something they can bring back to us on the 15th. So that's my stance on it. I don't, I don't disagree with you philosophically, but I wouldn't support the motion as a part of this.
Eric, can I go?
Yeah, oh, sorry Christina, yeah.
That's okay. Um, Andrew, so I know in the past there have been some amendments made because we want to be very clear about where the boards, the board stands. Um, and to make sure that it becomes right, that, that the work is done. Um, if I'm concerned, I'm a hundred percent committed to the supervision component to exactly what you're saying, but I'd like to learn more about what it could look like, what the cost is going to be. So that we can make sure we have, that we're catching as many families and students as possible. So would you be okay if instead of passing an amendment, we? I don't, I don't know if this makes sense. Sorry, it's been a weird day. If we asked Steve and his administrative team to bring it back in two weeks with a recommendation. Knowing that it is a, not a directive of a board, the board, but a, a strong ask. Would that get you?
I'm not, I'm not interested in anything short of a board directive.
Okay, can we, I mean, but do we, we could, could we give a directive without? Passing an amendment or is that a parliamentary issue?
We could probably, I mean, it could probably be a separate motion if this, if this fails, I think that would fall well within what we're. Posted for and it could be a separate, it could be a separate motion after the main motion, I would, I would think. Uh, I'm not gonna withdraw my motion, but if it, if it fails. I'm not gonna withdraw my motion, but if it, if it fails and we go back and say I, you know, that we're directing the district to investigate district-run opportunities like this, I would feel better about that than I would about nothing, for sure.
What was the meant, can you just, or Beth, can you repeat back what Andrew had said originally?
Andrew, I'm actually hoping that you can say it on my time.
Just, do you want to have me screen, you know, you want me to screen share?
I think you should have permissions to share. Yep.
Andrew, is this meant to cover during the traditional school day hours?
Yeah. Yes, because I think outside, I'm, this is actually, this is actually kind of a, I think this is kind of a, this is a softer motion actually than I would usually make, not a harder one, because I, I didn't say all. I'm not, I'm not saying that every single person who says that, no, you have to, you have to give this to us is automatically going to get it. Although I, I do, I would see this being, this is something I would put some money into and try to spread it pretty, you know, pretty far and wide. But this would be, yeah, this isn't, this isn't wraparound. This is, this is school. I'm presuming whatever families had in place before COVID for, and between three and five or whatever, th- this is not, this is not an attempt to have us make daycares. It is, it is extended school sites. I think there's models. I think some of the big five are doing some kinds of, of things like this. I intentionally did not say that it would only be something you could sign up for, for every day, or that it only could be drop-in. Drop-in might make a lot of sense for the, for the big kids. As needed drop-in for a kid who can jump on the city bus. So this is a deliberately fairly soft but clear direction that we're going to do more than let community partners expand their offerings, which they cannot do. You know, they cannot do that at no cost to, to parents, although they might, it might work great in some cases.
Andrew, question, sorry. I understand your intention is to have this be a bit softer in your words that you use, but to me, it's so broad that it actually is concerning because I, could it, could it be interpreted then that those who need them and that it's so broad that it could be considered in-person learning by some? Which is not the intent.
Do we have to provide transportation to these sites or so then it, it becomes inequitable? If we say, hey, it's open and available, but if you don't have a car, then you can't get there. Let's, my preference is to send this, I mean, let's take a vote. Here, I think we understand what Andrew is asking for. Let's take the vote. If it passes, we'll, we'll go forward with it. If not, I, I'm still interested in bringing this, you know, putting this on the, the team's radar.
And I do think we should transport to it actually, I mean, but there could be different models. I think if you're doing, uh, if there's a, I think there's times you, you would want to, I think there's, I think maybe you couldn't always, I'd, I'd hope that members of the community would be, you know, selective if we're, if we're putting this out there and, you know, we don't have as much capacity as we want. I trust that people who really, you know, don't need the transportation aren't gonna ask for it, but we might, might provide some. I think it's a lot easier for the bigger kids who can, you know, who could probably use a, a city bus. So again, I'm not, I can't go back to the public and say that, you know, that I didn't at least try to make it an official, you know, official requirement, which I think is stronger as an amendment to the motion than it is to a separate motion with the board directive, although that's still, that's still much better than, I guess I'm, I'm done with the concept of the words of the board meeting also counting because they're in the minutes. I don't, I don't believe that. I don't believe they count. So they're just not official. So let's do this and if it fails, if someone wants to make it as a separate motion, then okay.
I could just quick clarifying question, because I do agree that there's, I know you said you think it's clear. I'd, I'd say on my end from an implementation standpoint, I struggle.
Oh, I didn't say clear. I said it's, it's soft, but go ahead.
So what does it mean when you say who need them?
Yeah, I didn't say, so I, I didn't say all. Okay, I'll tell you what, I will, it's a, it's a parliamentary shortcut, but if, if no one objects, Eric, you could ask if there's unanimous consent to let me strike that.
Is everyone okay with Andrew striking that?
In fact, I'll strike this because it's not for the non-students and the family to, they might, they might be helpers at it, but it's not for them. Okay, so if there's unanimous consent, I'll hit the delete and then my amendment will just be this.
Okay.
So can I ask again for clarifying questions? So extended learning support sites, essentially, are you looking at from when wraparound starts today to ends today? So you're, you're looking for us to provide, and now without an operational definition in front of it, so students means our children, so that's 21,000 children. So you're looking for us to potentially provide extended learning support sites for up to 21,000 students from the current beginning time for wraparound service to the current end time for wraparound service, which could be 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM?
Oh, no, 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 no. This is not daycare. This is, this is school day stuff. If there's, if there's wraparound sites that are, you know, receiving either direct payment or, you know, state payments or 21C payments, I think I could see maybe some of these extended learning sites. You know, maybe, maybe a daycare is picking kids up from the, you know, southwest side extended learning site. I, believe it or not, okay, I actually thought I was doing like a superintendent dream amendment here because it's more philosophical and doesn't have a lot of operational strings on it. But maybe I, maybe I blew that?
Andrew, how do we, how do we avoid the, with this, how do we avoid the exact same issues that we were gonna run into with the blended model? Or just going, I guess, I guess what, what you're saying is we're going to open up and staff to staff learning during the school hours. And I'm, I'm not seeing where this is different than having school. Because if I'm a parent and if I'm a parent, I want my kid to be in school on site, I'm gonna do this and we know we cannot open our school safely.
Yep, but you couldn't have, yep.
If 21,000 students choose this, if they need this, we are right back to where we are today, where we cannot meet CDC guidelines to open our schools safely.
Yep, I would, I would imagine a likely result of, of this motion or of a separate board directive of the same thing. A likely result of this would be the superintendent coming back to us in a week or two and saying, here's where there's open space. And we could, we think we could probably, we could probably swing about 2,300 spots or 1,600 spots or, I wanna do way better than Scott, Scottsdale. Eight for effort, but 500 for 21,000. They prioritized, uh, Scottsdale prioritized to essential workers came first and, and et cetera. Uh, I would imagine that we would hear back from the administration that there is some number well short of 21,000, which would be the capacity that we could handle here. The reason it's different than school is that we could have, we could have a safe place for kids where one, one adult is supervising more kids because the kids are generally working on their own help, stuff with a little adult help here and there. I'm just, I'm not okay with leaving community partners to handle this. But yes, I know there are, okay, I know there's not going to be 21,000 available spots. Not that people would want them all anyways.
How do you pick?
Well, again, I intentionally would leave it to, I, you know, Scottsdale has essential worker categories come, uh, essential worker categories come first. Situations that would support a, a staff member being able to work instead of going on a leave of, of absence come second after essential workers. There, there's criteria.
Andrew, is the intention that students would be there five days a week?
Maybe, or four if there's a non-instructional day. Could be. In, in Scottsdale, you have to commit to, they're asking people to commit to a site for all of the days. But I think the bigger the kid gets, the more it could potentially be a, a drop-in kind of thing.
All right, let's, I can't, oh, I'm sorry, I can't see everybody with Andrew's screen.
I'll, I'll, I'll cap, everyone, I'll stop the, yeah.
Okay, Brenda, let's go and then see if we can take the vote.
Okay, I'm, I'm not interested in making an amendment. I'm, I think our, Steve and his teams have expressed similar concerns with a lot of families who are going to need variety of help. I'm more interested in giving them a directive to find solutions rather than directing one solution in a, in a board amendment. Because there may be other solutions besides extended learning sites. I don't disagree with you, Andrew. I think that that can be one solution. I also, um, to have a place where kids can come work on their virtual classrooms or work online in, with their classrooms in, in a building. But I, and I also heard that.
That is an example, that's.
What?
That's, that is.
Exactly, but I don't, I think there might be other, other possibilities, other solutions. So I don't want to just, I don't want to tunnel vision the, the administrative team to say, this is the only thing you can look at now because the board has demanded you do that, when I, there might be creative solutions to, to this too. So I'm, I'm not disagreeing in your, in what you're asking for because I think it's, it's a good idea, but it may not be the only idea. And I would trust that if we give a directive tonight, Steve, that he will take that back to his team and possibly at least come back in two weeks with some preliminary thoughts. And I also, I just, I also want to say that I, I heard Steve say that this is something that we are working on with our community partners. And I didn't hear him say that we're depending on them to do something. So I see this as a, you know, it's a, a team mutual effort for, for our district and our community partners to work together.
Rhonda?
I think the reason why Andrew is proposing this amendment and is asking for something more concrete is because so many times since I've been on the board, he's actually proposed amendments that never went anywhere. So he's looking for something that is a little bit more permanent or that will have some accountability.
And I don't feel like that's there in that motion.
Okay, so how, so how can you make that happen then?
Well, I, I get, I get where this is gonna go. And if, if, if the motion fails and gets replaced at the end of this with a motion directing the administration to investigate district-run extended learning sites, that's not too bad. But if, if this didn't, I, I guess I was just sensing too much of a risk that the supervision piece is daycare and we don't do that because we're not licensed for that and it's not what we do. And so therefore we have to reach out to our partners who would valiantly work to increase capacity within their staffing levels and their, their means. And a lot of people would, would miss that, you know, would miss that vote. So, um, but if the amendment's gonna fail and this is gonna happen anyways, then fine. I just table, unless I see like a, a court ruling somewhere that, that, you know, table consensus, round the table consensus counts as action taken by a body, which I'm sure it doesn't. Some things have to be done a little more clear, so.
All right, Beth, do we call, so wait, do we have to vote on the amendment first? All right, so Beth will take a roll call and this is your vote on Andrew's amendment.
Warren?
Hi, oh, no, Nate, no.
Becker?
Hi.
McCoy?
No.
Sit Nakow?
Hi.
Smith?
No.
Charlton?
No.
Brandon Huber?
No.
Andrew, do you want to give another motion with the directive?
We, he would do that afterwards because we have, now we have the, the original motion is on the table.
Okay.
Yeah, so I don't, I'm, I'm, I'm stuck on whether or not to try to do an amendment here, but we're left with this. So now we're left in the situation where if we, if we change nothing, we have, I like, this positivity metric, which I, actually my bring up concerns about the positivity metric happened to get me a, like, some very quick thank you responses from people who trust me are very, very, very far apart politically, so that's interesting. And maybe, maybe it's a sign of hope, but there's, it's a positivity, the positive testing metric and with Noel, I thought maybe a healthcare person would be here to talk about, about why on that metric. I don't like the idea of, I, I like people knowing that there's gonna be some kind of blended when we reach, even if it's not a, a, the metric that I would prefer. It, it's a weird position to not have that healthcare person to, to discuss this, this metric with. And ultimately, although I don't think it's, I don't think it's the right metric, I don't think it's the, I mean, it's not a horrendous metric, but it's one I want to, I, I don't want to stay on this ship for too long with this particular one unless we get clear evidence for it. I'm concerned though that the, the original motion says, I, I still don't understand what the original motion as written says about what happens with the 5%, the 5% metric. Let's say it is, I have nothing better to offer, so it's at least gonna start out as being a 5% positive test metric. I still don't know what that means and when people ask me what it means, I don't know what to say. And I don't know what it means when we reach five, if we reach 5% before September 1st, which we pro, I think there's a reasonable chance that we will. What is, I still don't know what that means.
So I can offer that I, we selected 5% based on recommendations from external experts and we don't have people on our team to make that determination. I, and that the intention is that we would develop with that grading, gating criteria, gating timeline that we would bring back to you on August 17th that would spell out what happens when. If, if the offsite model is the one that the board selects, if the board selects, If the board selects, uh, blended model, then we would bring that gating criteria back. They would have a timeline to move, uh, from, uh, blended to onsite.
Christina?
If we, in a month, determine that there was a better gating criteria or better numerical value that we were looking at, would we have to, we would have to have a new separate motion to then vote on that as the new criteria?
Since it's included in this motion, you would.
Okay, so I mean, Andrew, do you have a better option for what we have? I mean, it's not perfect, but nothing's perfect.
I thought of, I, I mean, I, I think we can, I think we can get one. I don't think we're going to get one tonight. And I thought of, I mean, I, I, I think it should be, yeah, I think it should be based on positive case counts, but I don't know enough to say how many positive case counts. So I, I guess maybe we'll have to stay with. Maybe, so I, I hope in two, I hope in two weeks. So, so Steve, you're saying that if we did, um, you would be, you would be coming back in two weeks saying that, um, where like, okay, this is the day, this is the point at which we check out, where we check for the five percent. And this is how we make sure it wasn't a single tiny dip to five percent that didn't really mean it. Whether that's three in a row for whatever. But the focus would be on the five percent metric. But you certainly, if you found a better metric or if the county helped you find a, a better one by the seventeenth, you certainly wouldn't be shy about sharing that with us. And I'll be part of the search for the, the metric too. Yeah, ultimately, I, I, I guess I won't, I won't offer, I won't offer an amendment based on it because it's not, it's not going to, it's not going to change my, my vote on the motion anyways. And I'm, this time I'm convinced that I, I think we'll find a better one. I think everyone wants to find a better one if there's a better one. And nobody wants to be in the weird situation where if a lot of people get sick, but even more line up to test that it somehow looks like a fake okay. And then people are angry when we say, no, we still can't, can't open. So, um, I'll just, I'll just say a couple of things and then I'll, I'll stop. I'm, I'll be done and ready to vote. But I, I just want to say a few, a few things, you know, I'm, I'm on, I'm on board with doing whatever I can to help with this situation regardless of the, the split vote that's going to happen tonight. And, and in the end, al- although what I, I, I can't vote for something that leaves, that leaves me having to, no other choice but to say, I don't know to so many, so many families that are worried about what's going to happen. There, there's a few things I can say that I, I know. I know that the virtual learning this time, which is our curriculum, it is, it has been under development, it has been planned, it is not crisis planned like we had to and did very well in last March. When the goal, and I, I told anyone who was listening this, if we, whatever we could deliver, even just okay, even to deliver something, that was important then. Now delivering a curriculum that we can transition back into, you know, back and forth if we have to, to, from blended to, um, offsite to onsite. I'm, I'm confident that, I'm confident that we can do that. I'll be continuous to share ideas about it. But the, the virtual will be, the virtual will be much better. One thing that is, I don't think ever officially someone came right out and said at a board meeting, there, there is one thing that, and I, so I don't, I don't think that, although I wasn't able to go today, I saw the video, I talked to people who were there. There is somewhat of a spectrum of how far you go on the social distancing versus how bad it becomes for kids. And that balance will, that balance will have to be found. But I think that, you know, I, now Noel had been talking primarily to, you know, to older kids, of course. But, you know, they expressed a preference for, you know, we're going to suck it up for, for anything to get back to, to school. And, and that's a, that's a great thing to hear. We will suck up anything to get back to school. I mean, that's got to, that, that feels great. I think that, um, but the part that was missing here that I did get from some people in the public is please encourage use of outdoor class meetings when possible. And one thing that takes kids out of that very sterile looking situation, and we probably have at least a couple of months where this can happen on many days. You can take them outside and have a circle with us. It's just, it's going to be a bigger circle, right? But you can actually have your circle time outdoors with social distancing. So it's a big circle. So I'm assuming that, you know, that opens things up a lot and can make it a lot better. We just have to give the, the, uh, make sure that they have the green light to use that. And I do think we'll find a way. And I, I thought about, I thought about motions and amendments and they became too complex for me to write them down. But everything I've heard, I do have an expectation that, that, um, some, some services were, were not under a, we aren't under a lock, the building door order anymore like we may have been in the past. And so I'm optimistic that there will be some opportunities if, um, for those, you know, and it probably, probably starts with IEPs or emergency situations and emergency meeting with the school social worker or something. I'm hoping those things can all, all happen. And I am, I'm also very hopeful and I, I think, I think maybe two weeks is even too long, but I'm, I'm hopeful that we'll know, we'll be able to know more and continue to roll more out for families that'll be part of that process. So thank you.
All right, Brenda?
Just have a very quick, uh, question for Steve. Um, yeah, and your, uh, uh, report, your Monday report of the infection rating thing, there, there's another, uh, chart that shows new cases per hundred thousand people. And just for, when you come back in two weeks, I'd be interested in hearing either from you asking others or, or, uh, um, somebody from your medical team, uh, health, healthcare team to, to explain why the, the transmission rate is better than the new case rate. Just because, and again, I, you know, like Andrew said, it, it, the, the percent of positive tests can vary depending on how many people have been tested.
Sure, I can definitely look into that with the team.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, um, so just bringing us back to the original motion that was made by Christina, seconded by Brenda, um, to start, begin the school year virtually, uh, Beth.
Can we read the whole thing again, Eric, or can, can someone, just, just the public who might be tuning in now?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Um, let's see if I can pull it up here.
I have it. Do you want me to just read it?
Um, I, I've got it. Go ahead if you've got it.
Okay. Okay, um, the, the motion on the table is, um, that the administration's recommendation that instruction begin on September first, twenty twenty, and a primarily off-site instructional model with exemptions from, for individual students, free and appropriate public education requirements, and that the model be reviewed on a weekly basis using the gating criteria of a fourteen-day trend of five percent or less of Brown County COVID-nineteen tests being positive, positive as presented be approved.
Second, oh, we already did it.
We already had this, yeah, thanks.
Sorry, it's been, it's been a while since we did that procedurally.
That's why I was like, we need to read that again.
Beth, if you could, uh, take the vote, please.
Wait, Becker?
No.
Shelton?
Aye.
Sit Nakow?
No.
Warren?
Aye.
Brandon Huber?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Right, motion passes five to two. Brings us to the second item, back to the agenda.
So I have a motion under the same item. I, I moved to direct the administration to investigate, extended learning support options for students.
Second.
Beth?
McCoy?
No.
Shelton?
Yes, aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Sit Nakow?
Can you, can you explain a little bit? Can you just clarify what, what's going on? I'm not following.
So the amendment, the amendment to put it into the motion that we passed, the amendment that would have based that the district must provide and staff some, that failed.
Right.
And now it's a motion directing the administration to investigate this. So it's requiring this option to be on the table and investigated.
Oh.
So it means that the, means the admin team has to look into it.
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Brandon Huber?
Aye. Right, pass six to one. All right, um, so that takes us to leasing Cup of Joy. Superintendent Merle, I know that we've talked about this, we had a discussion, open session. Do you have anything else for us before we look for a motion?
No, I don't.
Okay.
Eric?
Yes?
Um, I'd like to, uh, move that the board authorized administration entering to a lease agreement for the building located at two-three-two South Broadway, Street, Green Bay, Wisconsin, for four thousand dollars per month with two thousand dollars per month credit toward the purchase price during the first year of the lease and fifteen hundred a month credit toward the purchase price during the second year of the lease as presented be approved.
A second.
Any discussion? Rhonda?
Um, thanks. Uh, yeah, I, again, looking at what just happened, knowing the hardships that our community is going to experience because of the decision that was made, knowing we will have quite a few buildings with space available and we will have parking spaces as well. For all the reasons we've discussed in the past, I absolutely cannot imagine that we would take a dime, no matter what percentage of the, of the budget it is, and we would put it towards another building. I think it's political suicide. Um, and when it comes to anything in the future for a referendum for our district to do this right now. But I'm also curious and I'm interested in knowing, because if you look at the lease, there's a lot in there. We're responsible for maintenance, releasing a building, but yet we're responsible for maintenance, upkeep, repair. It says, again, leasing a building, we're responsible for that. We're also responsible for the building as is. So regardless of the situation, we are being asked to take this on as an expenditure and we're doing it as is. And responsible for all of the, the upkeep, maintenance, repair. We're also responsible for any taxes incurred, which is probably not even going to happen. But we're responsible for the build out, the operational costs. So, so, you know, I'm assuming this doesn't end at four thousand dollars, right? The expenditure doesn't end there. We're responsible for the signage. We're responsible for so many things in a building that we're leasing in a time during a global pandemic when we are going to not be occupying so many of our forty-two buildings. So I would like us to think about what, what kind of tone deaf decision this would be if we were to in fact move forward with it. Because we have a lot of significant needs that are coming to the table. And we have a lot of expenditures to make sure that we support families and staff and kids coming, moving forward. So I cannot imagine a worse time to take this on and to agree to do this because number one, we don't need the space. We have it. Number two, we don't need the parking spaces. We have it. So I, again, looking through the lease, and I don't know if anyone did, the operational costs, what are they? Who, who takes on a leased building as is and agrees to repair it and upkeep it? I, I, I don't think anybody sitting here would do that in their own personal life. So, um, I'm going to vote no. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Andrew?
So it, um, would be, it could be a good candidate for part of it, could be one of the, uh, extended learning sites. So there's, there's that. But also I, I think, um, we have a situation here where if this was, if this was a straight purchase, I would say absolutely not. I think here we were able to get, we were able to get terms where there's a purchase price below the market price of the building, well below the market price of the building if it were listed. And we have right of first refusal. We have, um, we have this credit towards a future purchase that we can do, that we have right of first refusal to do and we don't have to do. So there's just enough, there's enough in it for us that there's enough positives to, to push me over the yes, the yes bar on this one. Since we can walk away from this and I would have been a hard no on a, on an outright purchase. I just think there's too many good factors we were able to negotiate into this arrangement to, that I think there's a lot of positive and if there isn't enough positive, we can walk. So that's, that's where I'm at.
Yeah, and I just, I mean, this is my first, like, property thing on the board. But I, I mean, I agree when we initially talked about this, that this would have been a horrible time to purchase property. We just don't know where we're going to be in a year or two years with the people working. I don't know that we're ever going to go back, you know, as a country to business as usual, where we will have everybody in that district office, but we just don't know. I'll be honest, my biggest concern with this is that building is right on top of our district office. And I'm really concerned with what, who could purchase it. I don't want another bar on top of the DOB and I don't want an adult bookstore there. As a parent, if I wouldn't want my kid coming to a school board meeting on a Monday night in person because we will be back in person again if that was a popular bar. So, I mean, given the fact that we're leasing and we have that option to step back, if we, we get there in two years and we don't need it, we can step back from that. But I think we can find uses for it now. And like I said, Mike, I'm concerned with what it could be.
Bon, can you, can you clarify though that, um, have you heard that there's potential for it to be a bar or an adult bookstore, I think is what you said? Have you heard that that's actually on the table? Because I.
No, no, I haven't. But don't we have, don't we have a bar in the DOB building now? I mean, isn't there a bar adjacent to the DOB property?
Actually inside the DOB building.
Yeah, I, I don't think that would be a, a good choice given the purpose of what we do there. And like I said, I wouldn't be comfortable having, um, one of my kids going to a meeting at the DOB at night if that is what it was. And that's always a possibility. With right of, right of, what, with right of first refusal, we, we don't run the risk of that and it's worth it for me. I'm done, sorry.
Yep, Laura and then Christina.
Um, my position on this lease is that, um, I think that controlling the property around the DOB is something that, oh, any well-run business in the city would understand. Any well-run business would give city a serious consideration to either purchasing or, as in this case, having control over what that property is used for.
Any well-run business would give city a serious consideration to either purchasing or, as in this case, having control over what that property is used for. Uh, not having control is how you end up with four bars within just a few yards of a, a building that children and families and staff are coming and going all day and all night. Uh, I don't know if some of you remember, but just a couple of years ago, there was just a horrific assault um, that happened near the back door of that bar that is right south of our, of our building. Um, and that back door spills into our parking lot. Um, you know, those are the kind of things that go along with those kind of establishments. And having control over the usage of that building, and also being able to potentially offer a more comfortable um, location for families to register and to connect, as I know Pete Ross mentioned, to services that, additional services that they might need. It just seems like a prudent decision for, and I'm going to be voting in favor of the two-year lease.
Christina.
I'll keep it short and sweet. Good idea, wrong time. I respect everyone's opinion on this. I'll be voting it down.
Uh, if there's no other comments, so go ahead, Rhonda.
I understand Christina, your point, but I think that it's, we arranged it so that we have minimal financial input to, to leasing instead of purchasing. I think in three years when we're, we're back up and, and working like we have, I think the one thing about the parking that hasn't been pointed out is that some, a lot of times we have teachers and staff that come into our buildings for professional development that lasts longer than two hours. And so parking on the street is not an option for them without getting a ticket, because all of the parking that's on the street around the DOB is, is two-hour parking. So I just think it's, I, I get the financial implications at this point, but I just feel like it would be really short-sighted, and we would be sorry in three years if we, it didn't, uh, didn't lease the building.
I have one more question.
Yep.
What is the operational cost? Like what, aside from the, the $4,000, like what would it actually, um, let's say you wanted to be a parent welcome center. What are we looking at as far as operational costs?
Well, I think, I'll go ahead, Steve.
As I say, I don't have a projection on that. I don't know if Pete does a projection on it, but, uh, that's definitely something we can bring back here.
Yeah, I mean, are you, I would imagine some of it is electricity, water. Um, and we, I know that we've talked about, we wanted to stick a minimal amount into it until we decide that, if, if we decide we want to purchase it, but-
But what's a minimal amount? Like, there needs to be a number. We're in a pandemic, we are literally removing support from community members, and we don't have amounts in front of us, not for a vote.
The way that, uh, that, that Mike Stengel spends his budget on facilities, that doesn't come to the board for, for approval. So it would go into Mike's budget that he already has. We're not increasing his budget to have more money to pay to fix this building.
But we're decreasing the budget that we have to actually support our families, and so that's why it's important to think about what that number is.
The, the money, this money is gonna go to support our families, in my opinion, so it's just shifting it from one level of support to another, so that's my opinion. Alright, Beth, um, you could call the vote, please.
Becker.
Aye.
Nakow.
No.
Smith.
Aye.
Brandon Hubel.
Aye.
Shelton.
No.
Warren.
Aye.
McCoy.
Aye.
Right, pass five to, uh, last thing on our special board meeting is the consent agenda items, if I could have a motion to approve.
I move the consent as listed be approved.
Second.
Uh, discussion, Beth.
Felton.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Warren.
Aye.
Brandon Hubel.
Aye.
Sit Nakow.
Aye.
McCoy.
Aye.
And Becker.
Aye.
Pass seven zero. Alright, um, somebody help me out, do I need a motion to adjourn this meeting? Yes, thanks, Steve. Uh, looking for a, a motion to adjourn the special board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Alright, that ends our special board meeting. Uh, before we begin our regular work session, uh, we're gonna take a five-minute break. It is eight thirty. We'll come back at eight thirty-five and start the special board meeting. Um, so I'd like to call the teaching and learning work session to order. Uh, we've already taken attendance at the special board meeting. First thing on our agenda is the open forum. It's possible that people have registered, and I might have missed it in my email, Beth, so I apologize, I dropped this. Do you, do we have people registered to speak?
We don't have anyone registered to speak, but we do have community members who'd like their statements read.
Okay. And I believe Lori is gonna do those readings for us. So Lori, I'll hand it over to you. Um, I do understand that, uh, I remember a few of the statements may take longer than five minutes to read, so I'm gonna do a five-minute timer. Uh, Lori will read the statements, and when the five minutes are up, I'll, uh, instruct Lori to stop.
Alright, ready for me to start?
Go ahead, Lori, thank you.
Alright, Dawn Newfals, three zero seven eight Sundance Avenue. I want to express my concern for my child and many other children and their need to be in school in person this fall. I have one school-aged child this coming year. This is his first year of kindergarten. He just turned five last week, and half of his four K schooling was canceled already with no options available to continue virtually after school is canceled for the year. My child thrives being around other children. He needs to start his K-12 education in person. He can't read, can just write his name, and is beginning to learn extremely critical and fundamental things that can't be taught to children this young online. How can you possibly expect for children this young to be, keep their attention span focused on a teacher in a virtual setting? I watched school-aged kids at the daycare this spring on their tablets, and speaking with the owner, she said it was a constant battle of the teachers spending a majority of their time trying to get the attention of the kids. The teachers spent more time trying to rein them in than they did teaching anything. Most kids under second grade can't read enough to use online learning, so not having in-person interactive learning to assist in their education will be detrimental to them in future years. By not allowing children, especially those in grade school, pre-K through fifth grade, to attend school in person every day, it would be severely hindering their ability to receive a good education and learn in some of the most important years of their adolescence. It's extremely discouraging that the recommendation to the school board is to start schooling virtually and not allow young children who need this face-to-face learning model and interaction to go back in September. They can't learn and grow the way they need to virtually. Our daycare has some school-aged children that had to learn virtually in spring when they shut the schools down, and the owner said that watching them interact on the tablets with teachers was heartbreaking. They weren't learning effectively, if at all, in that model, and a majority of the time was spent with teachers trying to rein them in and get their attention. That's an effective use of time or resources. It's not even understandable at this point that the recommendation is to start school virtually when a majority of parents surveyed are saying they want to send their children back to school in fall. It makes no sense. Last week we received information that they were going to give an option for those who wanted to start their children virtually could do so, and now this week they are making the recommendation to not send students back and start them all virtually. That is not going to work for these young children. I'm absolutely terrified of what this will do to the development and education of my five-year-old that needs to start kindergarten normally this fall. So that he has some, the same opportunity as those in the years before home. Before, did to learn and grow, yeah, this is what beforehand did to learn and grow. These young children who can't read, write, or do basic math yet are being punished over a virus who has little impact on their age groups and is infecting an extremely small portion of our population. Additionally, many of these young children have spent the summers in daycare, and with extra cleaning, hand washing, and sanitation measures, there have been no outbreaks in the daycares. Many of the parents work in areas that are essential areas and aren't infecting the children and bringing it into the daycares, and they haven't been practicing social distancing or limiting interactions among the children at all. I've talked to many parents with kids the same age, and we all feel like this is going to be, going to do more harm than good in terms of the health and well-being of our children. I just read an article yesterday that had a study about children being harmed by increased exposure to unnatural lighting from additional screen time. All these kids are having social and mental harm done from all the lack of social interaction with others and all the extra time spent on tablets, phones, and computers. And yet the school district wants to make the recommendation that they should learn virtually and increase that time even more come September. The virtual learning model is going to harm our children. It's not ineffective in certain ages, and additionally, isn't effective for older kids. My mother works in an office where a young girl had been working all summer. She is sixteen. They were talking about the last school year, and my mom posed the questions about how they handled tests and quizzes, and the girl said, yes, they are given, but they all look up the answers and cheat, because why not? Why would they try to retain the knowledge when they can look up the answers and cheat because they aren't in a controlled testing setting? Is the school district prepared for the negative impact this will have on our children socially, psychologically, and on their test scores as these kids find a way to get around the system by doing it online and looking for up answers? The test scores will go down. Their knowledge retention will go down, and the generations that are impacted by these virtual learning atmospheres that the school districts are trying to push are going to suffer for years to come as they try to catch up. And don't get parents started on Common Core math, because if parents have to help their kids learn, Common Core is going away. I hope these insights help. Honestly, the daycares have been running since COVID started with additional hygiene and safety measures taken. These children are still sitting next to each other for circle-shaped meals, running, jumping, and climbing, outdoor equipment and playgrounds and hugging, giving high fives, holding hands, sharing toys, and interacting physically on a daily basis. There have been absolute minimal numbers of children getting this virus in daycare ages, and they have been running their centers as usual. If they, daycare-
Lori, that's five minutes.
Kelly Kavir, I apologize if I didn't say that right, seven nineteen Merlin Drive. I want to say that the current state, the current start of school plan for Green Bay is not acceptable for all students. I agree with it for middle and high school students to a degree, but please take into account young children with different needs. Children with autism like my son and children with the same or similar issues need in-person classes for their best chance at learning. They need interaction with other children and teachers. Please listen to what the parents and teachers of these children want to do in regards to wanting these children to physically attend these classes. Obviously, put in place what safety measures are reasonable, like monitoring the children's health each day before and after class and keeping them home if they're ill at all. Even just having classes like my son's have half, have half attend two days a week, and the other half attend two days a week would be more beneficial than virtual learning. I can't express more how important person learning is for these children. Alright, then Tanya Burkabial, and again, I apologize if I mispronounced that, nine fifteen Rolling Green Drive. Hello, thank you all for your service to the community and children. I understand there's no good answer or right decision, but I'd like to express my disappointment in the recommendation for off-site learning. I am an essential worker like many other parents and citizens in Green Bay. I go to work every day and have not missed a day of work during this pandemic. I try to be safe as possible and luckily have stayed healthy. I'm a single mother to elementary school boys. I was fortunate to have support during the spring virtual semester. I know the school and teachers did the best they could. Actually, our teachers were fantastic. But honestly, oh, but honestly, overall, it was a failure. I don't think anyone could have done anything different to change it, and I accept that. We all did our best, and it was the best decision at the time. Since then, I feel we have learned a lot, and I don't think going virtual is the best decision. It is still not safe in the world. It may never be, but I feel like we know more about safety measures, and we need to move forward with our new normal. Schools can be as safe or safer as anywhere else. If a family chooses virtual, it's better for them. That should be their personal choice, and those students can zoom in on the classroom and learn remotely while their classmates are in the classroom. I believe teachers are an essential worker, like so many of us, with safety. There is some risk, but worth it in the long run for our children. They need socialization to be in a classroom and get better instruction than they can be at school. You see families, children, and teachers out in public at restaurants, bay beach, the zoo, museums, stores, et cetera. Not everyone, but a lot of people are, and what we have is a new normal. Schools, not virtual, need to be part of that. I feel the proposal is taking the extreme safety route. Honestly, from what I hear and read, the proposal is going against the majority. Just because the minority opinion has the loudest voice, why would we propose that? Lots of local, smaller schools are going back to school in some fashion. The schools that are going virtual are very large districts, Madison, Milwaukee, LA, et cetera. Green Bay is not in the same league as those. Please, please consider this, and I would really appreciate it if you would vote no for the proposal of virtual school. I know this is a difficult decision and no easy or right answer, but I do feel what is proposed is not the right decision for the majority of students and families in your district. Okay, and this one's from Kristen Madison, three two forty-one Normandy Lane. I would like to address several concerns my family has with the Green Bay Public School Administration's recommendation to start the school year in an off-site model. Before I get into my concerns, please know I do believe the virus is very real and fully support putting safety measures in place to keep our children as safe as possible from contracting the virus or transmitting it in the community. That being said, I must say I feel moving to an all-virtual environment increases other safety risks for our children and should be given proper consideration. I do not feel forcing all families into a virtual environment is a correct course of action. There are many factors that must be considered when we talk about children's safety, not just the potential threat of a virus. The biggest safety factor I see being compromised with the plan is the capacity of the parents to provide a safe home, and adequate food, clothing, and medical care will be greatly impacted for many families in an all-remote environment. There are many employers that will not employ employees to remote work and provide care for all their children at the same time. Other employers do not have the ability to allow employees to remotely work at all. If you close the schools, how are parents to work? Without work, they do not have the capacity to provide a safe home, adequate food, clothing, and medical care. You are putting the children more at risk for COVID and other detriments. You are impacting the mental and physical health needs of the child. Children need to have those relationships with other children and play with other children. These interactions with peers assist the children in developing interpersonal skills they will need long-term in working their way through life. You are impacting the mental and physical health needs of the parents, too. The alternative learning that supposedly provided from March through June was poor at best. Our entire household was frustrated nearly every day with the poor virtual education that was provided by the Green Bay Air Pub Schools. Here you take the lesson plan and teach your kids. By the way, we aren't going to give you the lesson plan until Monday morning. There was no structure, no schedule with teachers actually teaching, no teaching occurred at all, no review of completed work by the teachers, no turning in assignments, no grading, nothing. Toward the end of the school year, some teachers held a fifteen-minute session with your child once per week to check in, which in reality wasn't anywhere needed with the kids needed. Have any of you ever tried to teach your children at home? I feel I'm a pretty smart lady, and let me tell you, it's an enormous challenge. As a parent, you not only have to figure out what the teacher wants you to do with your kids, but all of the new-fangled ways of doing math. Sorry, I only know the old-school ways. We don't have all the resources teachers have, or even textbooks like we used to have as kids, to read and figure out all these new strange methods. As one of my children so nicely put it, what do you know? You were born in the nineteen hundreds. I was trying to show him how to do traditional math the way I learned it. Thankfully, I had an older child in the home that could explain the method, because she had learned it that way. What about the families that don't? Or when she's gone to college next year and can't come to the rescue? Surely you could email the teacher during the school day, but that doesn't mean you get a timely response. Based on the last experience with alternative learning, I won't hold my breath waiting for some of the teachers to reply, even though I emailed during the normal business hours and they weren't teaching classes. If the children were in school, they could just raise their hand and get immediate clarification or direction if they were stuck. You are losing that with this all-off-site model. Children also don't behave the same way for parents as they do for the school staff. My kids are more attentive in the physical school environment, thus they are much better learners there. They don't have distractions with their electronics or other items at home when they are at school. Mom, as a teacher, just isn't the same. My kids have no problem pushing back at me when they are frustrated and don't know what to do, but you bet your bottom dollar they wouldn't push back about an assignment that the teacher gave in school. I know some will say that's your problem, discipline your kids. I say to you seriously, show me one child who behaves the same for their parents as they do for others. It's not just the same. If my children weren't properly disciplined raised, then I would be getting calls from the schools, the school or teachers. Instead, when I go to conferences, I hear how well-behaved my children are. It has absolutely nothing to do with discipline, but in everything to do with the structural environment without distraction that takes place in person with actual teachers who are certified to teach and have the proper resources to do so. If other districts in Brown County and private schools aren't going to be in an all-off-site model, why are the Green Bay area public schools pushing this model? Your very own data shows that sixty-six percent would have their children return to school, and the same data shows you are leaving thirty-nine percent of students out of a fair and equitable education by moving to an online learning-only model, and that's with only thirty percent of grade six through twelve students responding to the survey. With only thirty percent of grade six through twelve students responding to the survey. So I can pretty much guarantee you are leaving way more than thirty-nine percent behind in this poor alternative to being in school and learning. This doesn't even take into consideration the students in grades four K through five. Those children do not do nearly as well in the virtual environment as the older kids in grade six through twelve. They need much more support and guidance continuously. My tax dollars are supposed to go toward providing a fair and equitable public.
Lauren, that's five minutes.
Okay. Alright, next one is Lisa Fowler in two six five one Heen, Heenaz Ra Lane in Green Bay. My husband and I strongly oppose a virtual reopening of the GBA PS. I have seen no studies or evidence that children are super spreaders. In fact, WPR broke a story from the YMCA of America, who stated they have not had one incidence of coronavirus spread from their summer programs. And now, since we have a statewide mask mandate, it makes no sense to keep kids at home. My concern is that small children will be on their own. Most parents work full time. My grandson is going to be a first grader. First grade is the most crucial learning period for ongoing success in school. Please think ahead. The well-being of our future is at stake and in your hands. Alright, this is the last one. Allison Pierce, two six six McKenzie Lane. My name is Allison Pierce. I'm a parent of a third and fourth grader that will be attending Beard Elementary this school year. I've written once already to express my opinion of being in favor for the school year to start virtually until COVID numbers in Brown County. Are at a safer percentage to go back to school face to face. I have taught in the GBA PS system for thirteen years and have been a parent of students in GBA PS for five years. I like to think of myself as an open-minded person and work hard to see points of view that differ from mine. I was very much ready to send my kids back to school. They did fine with virtual learning. In no ways is it the same as being in school in person, but we persevered and worked at it every day. I have a bachelor's and master's in visual art education and I struggle as a parent to provide support to my kids. I can only imagine how difficult it is for parents who do not work in education to help with virtual learning. As a parent, it's a sacrifice we have to make for our kids. On that note, I know all too well that many of our students. Do not have that support at home and rely on us teachers in their schools for the basic needs of love and care as well as education. I have worked at Eisenhower for five years now. Some of the most socio-economically challenged neighborhoods in Green Bay feed into my school. I know all too well that poverty is one of the biggest challenges at providing an equitable education. We should be looking to protect our most socio-economically challenged population from this virus. Because they are the ones who have been or will be most impacted. Your decision on Monday is in no way an easy one to make and I do not envy you because no matter what decision you make, people will be upset and angry. The biggest obstacle you must face is to take the emotion out of this decision. And that is so incredibly hard to do because these are our kids. Your decision needs to be based on medical expert advice, science, and data. That's it. This decision cannot be made out of what is convenient for families. This is hopefully a once in a lifetime pandemic. People are fatigued from all that has been taken away because of it. But all that fatigue cannot get in the way of making tough, science-based decisions for our most precious population. I have not talked with one teacher that doesn't want to go back face to face. And be with our students the first day of school as we have done countless years before. In the spring, the public was singing our praises for the work we did in such a short time to provide virtual learning on a momentous notice. That sentiment sadly is gone. I was very disheartened reading the Facebook pages many of you have to keep in touch with your constituents. We want to go back. But we want to be safe and we want the students and families to be safe. The virus has only been around for seven months. And no one knows the long-term effects of it. This summer has not been a vacation for teachers. We are working to prepare for school in a way. That we have been, that we have, have taught, never taught before. To be painted as lazy. And we should just shut up and get back to work because taxes pay our salaries extremely hurtful. We love our students like they are our own. Personally speaking, there are some days I see my students more than my own kids. Parents need to know that this decision again is based on science, medical advice, and data. And of convenience and not because virtual learning is harder than in person, because we know in person. Is what works best for almost all students. However, at this time of a worldwide pandemic, it is not the best or safest choice at this moment in time. Thank you again for listening. And that's everything.
Perfect. Thank you very much. That brings us to the teaching and learning discussion items and that will be facilitated by a spokesman.
Okay, be patient with me. This is my first time doing this. Um, Vicky, thank you for your guidance. We're going to start with the J-Doll Action Plan for the five-year contract review and that's going to be Jen Agonite.
Yeah, I'll do a quick introduction and Jen and Renee, if you can join us. As a public charter school authorized by the Green Bay Area Public School District, John Dewey Academy of Learning. Participating in a charter contract review with the district at least every five years. Our research and program evaluation department conducted a year-long review during the nineteen twenty school year. Jade all received that review back in March. And what you're going to hear today are the recommendations and their plans to move forward. So with that, I will turn it over to Jen and Renee.
Thank you. So I'm here this evening to share the results of our contract review as well as the action plan that the staff and I created this summer. To address the recommendation. The review encompassed twenty-five components. Of these fourteen were determined to be on track and did not require any action. The remaining eleven were identified as developing to on track. And I'm happy to report that none of the components were in any of the three bottom categories. Of the eleven components, one detailed resulted in thirty-nine recommendations for us to address with an action plan. And you will notice similar themes repeated throughout the action plan. The reason that the themes aren't grouped together. Is because the recommendations are divided by three main categories. Josh, I'm not sure if it's possible to show the document.
Yes, I can show the document.
That might be helpful.
You bet. You let me know when to scroll though, please. It's a long document.
Thank you. So near the top is where you can see in the green, you know, fourteen, the majority of the components were on track. And then the remaining eleven developing to on track. So if you can please scroll down. The first section is our components that relate to our John Dewey vision. And I'm going to summarize this, the recommendations and our action plan. And I'm happy to answer any questions this evening or in the future. With the first section, J-Doll Vision, one of the common themes that you'll see throughout is referencing standards. So we are a standards-based learning community and it's important that we continue to work with teaching and learning. To make sure that all of the standards that are being taught in any of the traditional or what we call legacy schools are also. Being learned by our students. So I like to say in a traditional model, the teacher are the keepers of the standards and they're designing their units and lesson plans. In our environment, the students are the keepers of their own standards. So we need to make sure that our students are still learning all of the same standards that every other student in the Green Bay School District are learning. So we have set up at least three different meetings throughout the school year with the Teaching and Learning Department. To crosswalk standards and make sure that what we have in our software program. Is similar to, or is the same as what the district has identified as the standards on the course essential documents. We also were, it was also recommended that we work with teaching and learning to explore how we can provide some college and technical education opportunities. On campus at John Dewey. So we will be talking about that when we meet with them as well. And if you want to scroll down a little, Josh. There was a mention in there about having staff with an alternative education license. We do have staff in each of the four content areas that serve as specialists. But we don't have a fine art teacher or an art teacher or music teacher. So we have started requiring that our staff have an alt ed license so that they can provide credit in each of those areas. Another theme that is repeated throughout the action plan relates to transportation. As part of our J-Doll Vision, we want our students to get out into the community to work with members of the community and with businesses to provide. More authenticity to their learning. And there have been times when transportation was not available. Or that was a hindrance, that type of learning. So luckily, we are able to use our grant funding to help us. Make a secure van. So that part is already in motion. Moving on to the second. Section. That, yeah, that's the, that's still the first section. That's math specific. So this, in the standards work, we're focusing on math, science, and social studies. Because we've already done that work with English Language Arts. In the second section, all of these components relate to the district priorities. And again, standards are mentioned. This time, the recommendation is that we look at alternative assessments. To determine if our students are meeting those standards. So in addition to their project work. The recommendations that we look at their growth in star reading and star math as well as some of the standardized tests like the Wisconsin Forward. And ECT Aspire, ACT, to identify how our students are doing with meeting those standards. Transportation is also mentioned again in this section. Also relating to our students who try to take courses at other high schools or middle school campuses within the district. If they want, for instance, to take a foreign language and they don't want to take an online course. Our students have mentioned that they, they worry about that transportation aspect. So that's something that we are going to discuss with the Transportation Director. Exploring how that works for other students who may be transferring between campuses and, and discuss what that can look like for John Dewey students as well. And also, our students and families mentioned that they have a concern about the equity of resources that are available to them. So we decided that first of all, we need to survey our students and our families to determine what those are, what those concerns are. And once we know that, then we can work with the appropriate departments to address those and find solutions. They also mentioned that a desire or the recommendation was mentioned that we work with the school board more openly. So our governance board and the district school board. So I've already reached out to our school board representative, who this year is Ms. Nikal. And she and I have had a few emails and the goal is to invite her to some of our governance board meetings. So that we can continue to discuss what some of those concerns might be. And if you want to scroll down to section three, please. This section relates to specific resources. One being our school website, which we are required to post our governance board agenda and minutes, which has already been updated. So some of these items we've already worked on. If you can scroll down a little bit more, please, Josh. So one resource area is our location. And families and students have reflected that John Dewey have a separate entrance. From the Northeast Wisconsin School of Innovation that we currently share the building with. So I have already started conversations with the NEW administrator as well as facilities. To see if that is feasible and how we might be able to move forward with that. Another concern was also related to transportation, which, you know, I've addressed already. And another major concern for our students was the lack of space to, to work with their project-based learning. And to, to have enough space to spread out and do what they need to do. So I think that's common knowledge, you know, and that's why there's other conversations going on about. Locations for our schools. So in the meantime, we've done the best we can by recreating certain areas. So that our, our middle school students can have their own private area, allowing more space for others. So we've just tried to, to move around as best we can in our current space. If we scroll down, another recommendation was to conduct a technology assessment. So we have set up a time to do that with Josh and his department. Identifying if there are any types of technology that would be conducive to project-based learning that we don't already have. So that's something that is on, on the, in the plan. And then finally. Our students expressed a lot of concern about the lack of social work availability in our building. We do have a fabulous social worker right now who we are able to share with NEW. However, it, she, we need three of her. So that is something that our students and our families. Mentioned. And so I'm working with pupil services and have some meeting scheduled. So that we can take a look at numbers and review the data we have about percent of our students who require some sort of social work. Support throughout the school year and try to figure out how we can, how we can make that happen for our students going forward. That is everything I have for you tonight. Do you have any questions this evening? Christina.
Hi Jen, sorry you have to be here so late with us after such a long night. It's nice to see your face. Two questions for you. One is, you can answer them together. One is, what would you like from the board at this point moving forward to support you and J-Doll? And then two, you're, I want to make sure you're going to invite us to some virtual options with your students this year. Because I'm sad that we won't be able to do that in person. So will you let us know when you have opportunities to connect?
I certainly will. We, as to your second point there, we did do a virtual event night last school year in the spring. And it went really well. So we're looking forward to improving upon that this school year, for this first quarter at least. Right now, we don't have an ask of the board. It's part of the, the five-year contract review timeline. That, that J-Doll needs to present our action plan. And I think what comes next is. When the board meets for your retreat and you review, you know, the action plan and all of the data. You get to decide whether or not to extend our contract for another five years, which of course we hope we do.
Awesome. Thank you. Well, thanks for all this information tonight and I'm excited to continue to work with you this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Warren.
Just a quick question. You mentioned trying to provide some CTE opportunities to your students. How are you seeing that unfold? What kinds of opportunities do you think you can provide? And or will you take advantage, if you have a van, will you take advantage of some of the CTE courses that we already offer in other high schools?
That's a great question and it's, that's the big question that we're going to be exploring is. What type of CTE opportunities might we be able to provide on campus? That perhaps is different from what's already offered at other campuses. But then also, if there is something available elsewhere, helping our students get to those campuses so they can participate.
So at this point, you haven't really talked about specifics about what you could offer.
No.
I'd be interested to hear about that, your discussion around that, because it would be cool to have something. That, like you said, that none of other, our other high schools provide. You might have other high school students coming to John Dewey to take a CTE course.
Yeah, that would be great.
Well, I think it's worth pointing out too, several of you have been in the building and have seen the Maker Space. And it'd be nice if, if it does happen in redesign twenty twenty. That if we actually get more space there for John Dewey, that Maker Space can be better utilized by the John Dewey students.
Yeah. Andrew.
It did, so I remember some of the discussions about the, the space. Did. Did we say that there was going to be a separate entrance and then not deliver it? Because I don't like to be in that position of agreeing to a separate space and then a year later you don't have it.
The idea of a separate space is something that we talked about.
Sorry, separate, separate door, sorry. I knew there would be some shared space until we got your own space and that, as you know, is, of course, in the works. But the separate, if the separate door was supposed to happen right away and we said it was going to happen right away and it didn't happen, that's not good.
I don't believe that it's something we said would happen. We, the, when our students and families requested it, we certainly looked into it. One of the reasons we liked having a common entrance to the building is that we do have a desk at the entrance to the building. So that when families come in, they have a friendly face welcoming them and saying hello. Versus in our former building, they rang a doorbell and then just had to kind of figure out where to go. They had to like walk upstairs or go up the elevator. We wanted them to have a warmer experience when first entering the building.
And that, and it's a good experience. Don't get me wrong. And that, and it's a good experience. Don't get me wrong. Did we, um, did we end up getting enough staffs, staff support for that? I know there was some, lot of, lot of times we had administrators covering the, the desk there and covering it very well, but they probably have other stuff to be doing too. And so I was wanting to make sure that, certainly from my perspective, if we're, you know, if we're funding a welcome desk, to me, that means that we need, even if, even if a detail was missed in a budget request at one point, or if we thought we could do more with less, if you need someone there all the time, I'd just assume pay for someone to be there all the time.
That would be ideal. It's my understanding that there is a security monitor at most of the other buildings and we do not have one. But we, you know, we're professionals, we're flexible, we make it work, but it certainly would be ideal.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Okay, let's move on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is going to be Melissa with the COVID-related leave.
Thank you, Dawn. As we worked with our committees and specifically the Operations Committee with respect to concerns of staff and looking at the staff survey and recognizing that we are moving forward, whether it be in the virtual blended or onsite model, we will have staff members who report onsite to work and teachers who want to report onsite to work to lead instruction from their classrooms, who will unfortunately still contract COVID-19 during the course of the school year. We want to be able to make sure that we are providing a work environment where staff can remain quarantined and not come to work to spread the disease and remain in a position where they are not faced with a predicament of not being able to have income because of the limited benefits that are available to them through the amendments to the FMLA that expire December 31st. As well as our newer staff who do not have significant benefits that they've earned that would cover these long absences. As we've discussed before, we've put together over 25 possible scenarios, and I'm sure there will be more as the school year unfolds of how a staff member could be absent due to a COVID-related incident. And there may be a circumstance where a staff member is required to quarantine for upwards to 25 days, given how they are exposed or what's going on in their family. And this would be a very long time for our staff members to go without wages if that was where this would come. So we are proposing a board resolution to temporarily amend the staff handbook to allow for COVID-related leave. It essentially just extends the language from the EPSLA and the EFMLA that were created by Congress in March beyond the December 31st timeframe and also does not limit the leave to a one-time incident, which is currently what the federal law would only allow. It would be a one-time incident.
Christina.
Melissa, are other districts doing something similar? Where do we stand in comparison?
I, I don't know what our, our neighboring districts are doing. Perhaps Steve or Pete could speak to that with respect to the Brown County districts. I do know nationally though, that that the larger urban school districts are doing this due to the amount of community spread. And that's what we have to continually think about. If we are going to have staff members in the building, including our custodial staff, our, our, our support staff, which they will be in the building whether we're virtual onsite or in a blended model. And with the amount of community spread in Brown County, we know our staff members are going to have repeated incidents of having to quarantine and potential exposure.
An offer that the area school districts talked about it. I don't know if they've taken any action yet. I also brought this up at the Big Five meeting and they're all working in a similar manner with their staff.
Laura.
Did, did, did GBA have any input on this, on this document?
Yes, the GBA was part of our operations committee meeting and I, they also sent it to their legal counsel, Tim Hox, who also reviewed it. And was very impressed with the work of the operations committee.
Thank you, Melissa.
Okay, any other questions? Noah.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I just have one. Under, sorry, under resolved A, or resolved V1, that the leave would run contemporaneously to any leave provided for under FFCRE and FMLA. Is that a requirement or is that negotiated by unions or what? How did that come about?
Well, it, it would run contemporaneously because the rules are essentially the same so that when an employee is opting for this district-provided COVID leave, that the leave they would be entitled to under the law would also run to provide those protections of that leave as well.
Okay, any, any other questions? All right, we'll move this one forward for our regular board meeting. Melissa, you are next again with the suspension of board policy related to COVID-19.
Thank you, Dawn. Just as last year, as we worked through the off-site model in March, we know that there are some board policies that are going to have to be looked at to facilitate, again, whether we are off-site, onsite, or in a blended model. We have included those in the resolution for you to be amended short-term again for the 2021 school year. Briefly, we are asking for an amendment to policy 443.1, the student dress policy, to allow students to wear face coverings for non-medical reasons to protect against the spread of COVID. We're asking that policy 531 telecommuting be amended to allow staff to work from home on a permanent basis and for reasons that could be related to childcare if needed as a result of and for the duration of the pandemic where appropriate and feasible. Under the EFMLA, a staff member has the ability to access leave when daycare or a school closes. As you discussed in the consideration for the off-site model, we know that there will be staff who are working untraditional hours. And so staff would be able to accommodate having their child home with them and still be able to work and perform all of their job duties pursuant to their contract. We're also asking that rule 720 be amended to allow for classroom doors to be open but remain locked as permitted by the district's facilities department. One of the recommendations from the CDC is to mitigate high-touch areas. And if classroom doors are closed and locked all times under the current rule, then that will result in significant touching of the door handles, which could result in transmission of the, of the virus. And the same with respect to rule 733. It has similar language with respect to doors remaining closed and locked. Policy 830, public use of the school facilities. We are recommending, and as noted in the reopening plan, to prohibit the use of district facilities for any use that is not essential to the provision of services to students unless the use is specifically approved by the executive director of facilities and related services. Again, this is to minimize the spread of the virus and also recognizing the limitations that our custodial staff will have if we are doing high amounts of cleaning during the school day and when the kids leave and if we are having guests in our school that are not related to our, our essential functions and having to clean after those individuals have been in the schools. And then finally, similar to many other school districts, we are asking for revisions to policy and rule 860 to prohibit any non-essential visitors from entering our buildings unless the entrance is specifically approved by the superintendent or his or her designated. And again, to minimize the spread of, of those, of the virus.
Any questions? Noah.
Thank you again, Madam Chairman. Just a few here. I'm sorry, I go nitpick resolutions and then it's, you know, nine twenty and it just gets. Okay, first one, resolve six. This is rule 720. Perhaps I'm just dumb. I don't know what I'm missing here, but how can a door remain, could a classroom door be open but remain locked? What is the, can that get explained to me?
Sure, just like if you would open your door in your house and turn the, the little knob in the, the lock to the locked position, you have the door open, but if you would pull it closed, it would be locked.
Okay.
I thought it, I thought it too. I wasn't going to say it, but I thought it.
Okay, thanks. Thanks.
If you have to close it quickly, it's locked.
Correct.
Okay. That makes sense. Thank you. Just a couple more if that's okay, Madam Chairman. I have eight and nine, which is could, for both of these, one is eliminating the facilities use. If the executive director of facilities and related planning doesn't approve it. And number nine is non-essential visitors from entering without superintendent approval. Could the board override either of those? Because I know in specifically, eight, in 830, I'm almost certain that the board has override power, but I'm not sure about the other one.
You're correct in 830 that the board does have override power and that we're not asking that that provision of the policy be suspended. We're just asking that, as he currently has the authority to do so, the executive director of facilities and related planning approves all use right now. And we would request that that continue forward with this proposal. And then with respect to visitors in the schools, that is, is not a, a board, that's not a governance issue. That's a a management issue and the superintendent can determine visitors in the schools with, as long as it's consistent with state and federal law and constitutional law.
And unlikely, though it is, the, if the board was not okay with all the superintendent-designated volunteers, though, we could set our own rules. We could override.
Well, this isn't volunteers. These are visitors. But yes.
Visitors, yes, which may or may not be a volunteer. Not that I'm too worried about it because there's probably not much visiting going on for a while anyways.
Okay, any additional questions? All right, we'll move this one forward for our next meeting. And then next is going to be policy and rule for 11 dot 11. And this is going to be Melissa and Ellen.
I think Ellen is with us tonight. Make her, oh, there she is. Hi, Ellen.
Here.
Okay, I, I just want to give a few introductory remarks. As noted in the cover memo from Ellen, this, this changes to Title IX were, were considered for a very, very long time by the Department of Education. But passed very swiftly and quickly and passed with the requirement that school districts implement sweeping changes within a matter of a few months. So while the Department of Ed debated these changes over almost two years, school districts are now in a very difficult position to implement these vast sweeping changes, as Ellen will describe, within a matter of months. And while school districts plan through a pandemic of how to get kids back to school. So I, I would like you to keep that in mind as Ellen walks you through the very difficult job we have to implement these changes and to come up with a feasible system of working through these changes in a pandemic. So thanks, Ellen.
All right, Josh, if you can share the presentation, I'd appreciate it. So if you don't know me, and I've been introduced, but my name is Ellen Krieger and I am the district's student discrimination discipline and Title IX Coordinator. And what I'm bringing forward to you today are the changes that are mandated by the U.S. Department of Education with respect to Title IX of the Education Amendment Acts of 1972, which is most commonly known as Title IX. So as a reminder, that Title IX provides that no person in the United States shall, on the basis of sex, be excluded from participation in, be denied the benefits of, or be subjected to discrimination under any education program activity for those receiving federal financial assistance. So as a little bit more of a background, Title IX was originally signed into law in June of 1972. And it is enforced by the U.S. Department of Education's Office for Civil Rights, which is known as OCR. In recent history, most of you will remember that the guidance that was issued by President Obama in 2011 and in 2014 again. However, neither of those guidances, which are more commonly known as dear colleague letters, carried the force of law that the changes to the, to the new regulations that have come out now carry. So with the advent of the Trump administration, the new U.S. Department of Education Secretary Betsy DeVos made it her mission to make changes to what the new administration believed were injustices in the Obama administration guidance. So specifically, the new administration was determined to balance the scales of justice that they believed were previously stacked against the accused. So in, as Melissa explained, in November of 2018, OCR released their proposed revisions to the regulations as part of this rulemaking process that they need to go through. The proposal drew more than 124,000 public comments. Nearly a year and a half later, in May of 2020, the department finally issued its final rule. The new rules become effective, which means they carry the force of law on August 14th, 2020, which gave school districts less than 90 days to implementation. This, of course, while we're in a pandemic. So it should also be noted that Secretary DeVos, shortly before the release of the new regulations and immediately before the pandemic began, announced that she was authorizing the OCI to implement a new enforcement initiative aimed at combating sexual assault in K-12 schools. From what I'm hearing from the National Association of Title IX Administrators, of which I belong to, they all agree that K-12 schools are going to see more enforcement activity with respect to the new regulations. So the new regulations are going to prove significant changes. They are now specifically will define what constitutes sexual harassment. While it narrows the current accepted definition of sexual harassment, it will now also include sexual assault, dating violence, domestic violence, and stalking. And the new regulations make it clear that they will apply to any of the defined situations if they occur between employees in the workplace as well. So it's not just a student, a student or student, employee on student, it's student on employee or employee on employee. The most troubling piece is the new rules are going to place a significant burden on the school districts, which you're going to see in the next slide. The new regulations are very descriptive as to what the process must be followed when the district has actual knowledge of a complaint that falls under the definitions. I should probably stop and back up a little bit to say that this process will occur for certain items that fall under the, the Title IX protections here, but other instances will also still fall under Title IX. They just may not have to go through this huge process. But we're looking at this process for the ones that qualify. So for those that, that, when we get a complaint that falls under the definitions of Title IX under the new rules, there's specific roles that we must adhere to and must be performed by individual people. And one of these positions is the investigator. And I understand that concerns have been raised regarding the title of the position of investigator, which the board approved. And as I've just stated, the new regulations have identified specific roles which we must fill by individual members. And one of these positions is specifically called an investigator. So I hope this kind of clarifies the why behind why we titled the position as we did. And that, I believe, provides the transparency to the stakeholders that they need to see. But it's based because the regulations require an investigator. So the investigator is the first step in the process, and the position requires extensive training. So I also want to thank the Board for being proactive in approving the investigative position prior to the release date. This will allow us to get the position trained in a timely manner in order to meet compliance. The rules also require school districts to appoint a decision maker and also an appeal decision maker. So it should be noted that neither the decision maker nor the appeal decision maker can be the investigator, nor can it be me as the Title Nine Coordinator. So right there, we have four different people that we need to, to train as well. And all of those will need extensive training. So as you can see, the new regulations are placing a substantial burden on the district at a time when individuals are already overextended in our attempt to balance student safety with the provision of quality instruction during a pandemic. I don't know about any of you, but I'm pretty sure I wasn't offered a course in, to do this in my college education. If you were, can you sign me up? Because it would be great to be a part of this. What's probably the most noted change? And although they're numerous and specific, the most important one and the most noted one is any individual accused of a Title Nine infraction must, not may, must, be presumed innocent throughout the process until the decision maker makes and releases his or her decision. That means that no disciplinary measures can be instituted against an accused until the decision becomes final. So in other words, there's no immediate suspension of a student upon an allegation. In addition, our current process was building administrators would bring the student down, talk to the student, talk to the accused, do an interview. That can no longer happen. Any individual that's participating in the investigation process must be given notice before the, being interviewed, and the notice must allow enough time for that individual to prepare for the investigation. They are also allowed to bring an advisor of their choice to any meeting. And what has perhaps garnered the most attention in the new rules is the requirement to share any evidence gathered to both parties. So prior to finalizing the investigative report, the investigator has to allow at least ten days for each party to provide any response to all of the evidence. And once that is complete, the investigator then finalizes the report and must provide a final report to both parties and allow an additional ten days for the parties to respond to the final report. As most opponents of the new regulations are going to point out, this most likely will have a chilling effect on reporting. The new regulations also severely limit the removal of an accused from a district's educational program or activities. For an emergency removal of a student, a school must complete a threat assessment. The problem with emergency removal arises, however, in that Wisconsin law only allows a student to be suspended for fifteen days prior to an expulsion hearing, or ten if they are a student with a disability, which does not align with the minimum, probably thirty-plus days, is going to be required for the investigative process to be complete. So, this removal also is going to apply to co-curricular activities. And let me give you an example. Let's say hypothetically that your star quarterback on a high school football team is accused in a formal Title Nine complaint. Under the new rules, technically, that student cannot be suspended or denied the ability to play in games until the decision-making process is complete. And the decision becomes final, because the decision can be appealed, so it could be even longer. So in addition to the obvious school code of conduct problem we have going on, this requirement could create an issue with respect to WIAA requirements, as the WIAA Code of Conduct requires that any student charged with a crime becomes ineligible for further participation. We're still awaiting guidance from the WIAA as to how this conflict will be resolved. So the new regulations consisted of over two thousand pages of very descriptive measures a school district must implement when faced with a formal Title Nine complaint. After spending significant time poring through the various materials released and spending significant hours on training on the new regulations, I am putting before you what I believe the district needs to approve in order to be compliant with the new regulations. I realize that the policy and rule are extremely long and are probably the longest policy and rule you are ever going to encounter. However, this was the hand I was dealt, and it is my job to ensure that the district is in compliance. This is especially important since non-compliance carries the burden of jeopardizing our federal assistance. In these times of crisis, our federal assistance is needed now more than ever. I'm asking that you review the proposals I've submitted and ask any questions that you may have. I'll do my best to provide an immediate answer, but please understand that because the breadth of the new regulations and the short timeframe allowed for implementation, it is possible that I may need to do further research in order to respond to your questions. Because the implementation date is August fourteenth, the proposed policy and rule will need Board approval in August, so I can begin preparing the additional procedures that will need to be implemented. Upon approval of the Board's new policy and rule, some of the steps that we would need for implementation would be to provide role-specific training. As I mentioned earlier, this places a significant financial burden on the district. The rules seem to suggest that a minimum time for training for role-specific individuals is eight hours. The current training opportunities are also expensive, with an estimated cost between a thousand to two thousand dollars per individual. I can amend that slightly. There are more training opportunities that are coming out, and I'm hoping that we can do our best to find some training that is more cost-effective. So the next step after that will be providing training to our administrators, because this requires a huge shift in current practice. And our activity directors will also need training. Only to also develop new procedures to follow when receiving report, as well as to develop additional platforms for reporting, as reports can now be made during non-business hours. So essentially, I need to be available essentially twenty-four seven. So at some point, we're also going to need to provide staff with a general awareness training, and we should also be looking at providing student with age-appropriate training on how to report incidents of sexual harassment. So in addition to a financial burden, we are also placing a time burden on our employees at a point when time is already a premium. Now, I realize this was a very short summary of significant changes that the district is required to implement. I do want to emphasize that the major process changes required under Title Nine that I've just reviewed here will only apply to what is termed the Big Five. So meaning sexual harassment as defined by the regulations, sexual assault, domestic violence, dating violence, and stalking. While the district is still required to respond to reports of harassment and discrimination that do not fall under the definitions of the Big Five, the district will not be required to adhere to this exhaustive procedure. Do any of you have any questions on what I've presented? I know I went a little bit fast, but wanted to give you a general overview of what has been coming forward.
Anybody? Andrew?
Just, just two comments. First of all, I, I appreciate your work, and I hope that with the important planning going on for the pandemic, that we are able to meet the minimum requirements of this regulatory burden in a way that avoids any funding problems, and that we do the minimum to comply with the order of the most unqualified Secretary of Education who has, who has ever lived. And I have had, there have been Secretaries I've liked and not liked of appointees of both parties, of the only one who has never had a role in public education in, in her life. And so I look forward to us doing whatever minimum we need to do to be in compliance with this and not get in trouble. Looking ahead to the very likely realization that despite your necessary quick work, that much of this might be gone in five months' time. So no, no, I'm not saying we didn't have to do it, but there's a pretty good chance that large portions of it will be gone or removed from enforceability before too long. We, of course, have always taken sexual harassment seriously, sexual discrimination seriously, sexual violence seriously. So did every other district. It's not, this is a solution looking for a problem that the Secretary invented, so. But thank you for your work to make sure that we're able to be compliant with this for however long it lasts.
Brenda? Oh, I'm sorry, Ellen?
I just want to clarify one point of, of Andrew, and there are, there are two things that I should probably clarify. One is, there is a motion for an injunction out there to delay the start date. And even in the likelihood that will pass, it's, all it's going to do is delay the work. And here, the initial work for the policy is done, so even if they do decide to delay it, I see no reason to delay the policy. For further clarification, even with, if we get a new administration, the difference between what happened in, with the Obama administration, Obama administration with their guidance, and this being a rule, they would have to overturn the rule. So even with the new administration, you're probably looking at at least eighteen months bare minimum to go through the rulemaking process to get this overturned. I wish it was as simple as, as a five month, you know, or a two-week procedure to overturn it, but unfortunately, that's not how this will work.
There could be legislative, there could be, I'm, I'm speaking of the hypothetical possibility of a congressional action to just scrap what was done.
Even if they do, I do believe they will need to go through the rulemaking process to, yeah, it's unfortunate.
So even if, even if Congress passed a law that was signed by the President saying that the actions of this new policy are null and void and the clock is rolled back, it, it would still be, the existing would still hold until potentially for months?
I, I'm not sure, Ellen, if I can just jump in. I'm not sure, Andrew, that Congress has the authority to do that. It would have go through the challenge of the court system, which is why they're pursuing it through the court system right now.
Okay.
Correct.
Brenda, you had a question?
Yeah, so Ellen, if I'm understand, understanding you correctly, there's, we can't really do anything to the accused, whether it's a student or, or one of our staff members, until at least that thirty-day period. Is that correct?
Sort of. There is the emergency removal provision. And so if you go through a threat assessment, like, and I'm proposing we go through a threat assessment like we would do in any other safety and security measure. The, the, the rules make it pretty clear in the commentary that very little is going to qualify under Title Nine as a severe threat. However, that being said, I have been working with Melissa and trying to work with other resources to figure out how this is going to mesh with Wisconsin law in the event we do get an instance of a severe threat, and where we'd want to do an emergency removal, and how we could do that, because you're not allowed to discipline. So I'm looking at, I'm still exploring ways as to how we could do this, where we could, you know, potentially not have the student maybe not removed totally from the educational programs or activities, but not necessarily in that building. As I said, this is all, we're all scrambling to figure out two thousand pages of descriptive rules that don't necessarily match with Wisconsin law. Does that help?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'm just wondering if you, we can do something as simple as make sure the accused and the, and the victim are not in class together in their, in their school for thirty days, or that we move a student out of a room where the staff person works, or, I mean, are we allowed to do those kinds of things to at least provide some sort of protection?
This is going to be a very interesting, and this is going to be problematic, because the, any of the supportive measures, what they're being called now, which need to be applied to both the, the complainant and the respondent, especially to the respondent, cannot be any way interpreted as being disciplinary in nature. So, the question is going to become, is removing that student from a class disciplinary? We're still trying to work through that. Obviously, this has been, this has kept me up at night. This is very hard for me to understand the shift. And you want to protect the safety of all students, so I think we're going to have to try to work through this and, and do the best we can to make sure our students are safe within the law.
Thanks.
Wish I had a better answer for you.
Yeah.
Any additional questions? Okay. Thank you, Ellen. We will move this to our next meeting. The next thing we have is policy and rule four thirty-one, and Melissa, I have you down for that?
Thanks, Ellen. Okay, next up is change to policy and rule four thirty-one with respect to attendance. We are bringing this forward in the form of the resolution, because we recognize that virtual attendance will probably be here to stay, even after we move out of COVID. We know we have students at J D O, for example, that do attend virtually, so we, our policy and rule does need to address the issue of virtual attendance. What I would like you to remember is that this policy and rule applies to how we account for attendance for state reporting purposes. As you know, our state report card addresses the issue of attendance for every single public school district, and schools are given points and grades with respect to rate of attendance of students. But that attendance does not translate into participation, engagement, all of those sorts of things that we want our students to be involved in and at a high rate when they are attending virtually. And teachers will be addressing that through various means within their own classrooms, consistent with direction from principals and administration. And we will also continue to be working on truancy measures, the same manner in which we've done before. Nothing in the way that we will be accounting for virtual attendance will change any of the ways that we try to get students engaged, get, look at truancy issues, getting students back in the virtual classroom, those sorts of things. So we have put together a policy that would account for the tracking of attendance for the virtual model and would account for for the virtual model and would account for a student in a very flexible manner, recognizing that virtual school is not the same as in-person school and would allow for the count of attendance for a student when they have a contact with their assigned teacher for students in the elementary grades or their assigned homeroom teacher for students in the secondary grades.
Okay. Any questions? Noah?
All right, sorry, I, I've got too much stuff written down here. Okay, I'm, I'm the amended version with the blue text. This is under new rule D, so general attendance accounting procedures for onsite instruction. Under rule D, three secondary attendance for the definition of homeroom. So right now, I believe that's your third hour class across most, I believe that's all for the high schools. So how could, is there going to be like a shift, like maybe homeroom will be redefined as your first hour or something? Because like, you could skip your first two hours, show up for your homeroom, and now you're there. Like, do you see what I'm saying? So how is homeroom defined with respect to this new policy?
So we have to remember that virtual school is not the same as in-person school. And attendance for purposes of this policy is for purposes of state reporting. So if you don't report to your first or second hour class, Noah, and your teacher has participation grades and you learn things in class which then reflect in the work that you're doing in that class through the virtual instruction, you're probably not going to be getting a very good grade in those classes. But that is not the same as attendance for purposes of state reporting. Each school will be looking in, I think Nancy's still on the call, but each school will be looking at how that homeroom is set up and whether that be the first hour or whether it be the third hour. But as, as you see in this rule, Noah, that it's not just attending that homeroom, it's having contact with that homeroom teacher at some point during the day. So if, if you're not feeling well, or if you had a conflict with, with something else going on, you could have some alternative form of contact with your homeroom teacher during that day and that homeroom teacher could count you as in attendance for purposes of state reporting. I see Vicky popped on and I didn't know if she had something else to add.
Yeah, I just wanted to respond to the homeroom or advisory. We're still working out what we're going to call it. Over the next week, we'll be determining what hour that will actually be taking place, Noah, so it might look a little different this school year.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I have one more, but I'll let other people go first.
Okay, Christina, I think you had a question?
Thanks, Dawn. I feel like this is maybe going to be a longer conversation, so I'll just make a request. I'd like to have a, another conversation about truancy and attendance as we plan. Now that we know that we are, how we're going to start the school year. Just looking at this document at a very high level, I just have some concerns around, around the truancy procedure and the habitual truancy procedure. Just around, you know, if they miss one, what does that mean? There's a lot of reasons why kids are likely to miss and could get caught up in this. And I just want to make sure we're not contributing to something where it's going to cause even more long-term trauma for families. So we don't have to unpack all that tonight at, you know, this fifth hour, but I would like to have a longer conversation about that. I would like to put that on the radar for the board.
Christina, I think that's, we, we thought about that and.
Okay.
Pop on to, and that's why we understand that this is really our first endeavor into this and why we wanted to keep it as flexible as possible.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Yep. I, again, I didn't, I'm not questioning anyone's intent. I just wanted to voice that general now that we have a plan for the beginning of the school year.
Okay. Brenda?
Has there been any discussion about talking to the state legislature about maybe what this looks like and maybe what we could actually, maybe a variance of some kind? Or just in general that maybe we need, don't need to address this in the way we have in the past, considering everything going on? Is there anything out there? Is there any conversation up there about that when it comes to requirements in this area?
Yeah, I, I think, Brenda, I know that the state organizations have been having those discussions on the state level. One of the difficult things is the, the law is very clear that 10 absences are 10 absences are 10 absences. And we know we're going to have kids that are going to, just like our employees, who are going to have to quarantine or, or may be very sick for long periods of time. And there have been no exceptions made to the state law with respect to the counting of absent days for purposes of COVID. Here in Green Bay, we have kids who have had long-term illnesses. Unfortunately, in, you know, every year we, we face those difficult circumstances. And we deal with them very delicately and we work with our families. And while we're required to send out letters and notices, we have never asked for families to be cited or have interventions put in place when kids have been out for long periods of time due to medical reasons. And we would continue to approach the COVID-related absences in the same similar delicate and you know, compassionate manner.
So are those conversations happening?
My understanding is on the state level, yes, by state, by the state organizations.
Do you know who that would be?
I'd have to look back through all my emails to, I don't want to inaccurately give an alphabet name of an organization, Rhonda, without looking back to my emails to know who that was.
This might be something for the legislative liaison to look into. I'd love a report on that. Just throwing it out there.
Okay, are there any additional questions? Okay.
I think Andrew does, Dawn.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed you, Andrew. Sorry about that.
So you were talking about most of people with extended illnesses. I know 10-day absences, there's the 10-day absence. So that's not truancy. I mean, that's not, a medical excuse is not part of habitual truancy, is it?
No, no, you're right. But we're still required to issue the 10-day absence letter.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Noah?
Last one. Thank you, Madam Chairman. It's under, with involving truancy under a new section ID and then one through three. A visual truancy in this section for onsite instruction is with being asked with an exceptional excuse for five or more days on which school is held during a trimester or semester. So would that mean like, would that mean that I can, that someone going to East has a different definite, like, could someone be a habitual truant at East and not at West because of how they, of which days they're not there excused?
Conceivably, yes, the way the calendar would fall, sure. But, but the, the language in the statute is based off of the terms of that a school district has adopted. So most, you know, most school districts have the same terms. We're unique in that we have one school on trimester, our elementaries are on trimester. So if you remember that, our, all of our elementaries are on trimester. So an elementary student could have a truancy and a middle school student may not, based on how those days fall.
So that's required by statute, that's not your language?
No.
Okay. And just, you know what I'm saying, though? It seems rather asinine that at East, you know what I mean? Like, that, that where it lines up, that you can be habitual to at one school and not the other. Seems strange, but it's not your fault. So thank you.
Okay. If there are no further questions, we'll move that forward to our next meeting and then policy and rule 363.2. Melissa, I think that's you.
Yep, last one. Okay, yep. Last year during the closure, we had staff members who had wanted to be able to record their lessons because we had students who were, you know, going to daycare, living in different circumstances with relatives who may not have been available during the day that that lesson was being provided. And due to the way that our rule and policy were written with respect to recording of those meetings and those lessons, staff were not able to do so. Since COVID has started, we have received additional guidance from the Department of Ed that has clarified that virtual instruction, when it's live-streamed, is not an issue under FERPA. And that if we are to record those lessons, there are certain exceptions and certain ways to be able to do so, so that we are not violating our students' rights under FERPA and their directory data requirements. So we have revised policy and rule 363.2 and rule 363.2 sub two to allow teachers to be able to record those lessons in a FERPA-compliant manner so that we are providing equity and access to our students during the, the virtual school day to be able to access those lessons.
Christina?
Sorry, Melissa, you might have said this and I missed it. Does this include like a recording of a Zoom meeting or a meeting where the kids' faces are there? Is that what you're basically saying, that that would, that would be compliant?
Correct.
Okay.
We, I just want to give a kudos to Josh and his team. They had worked through, I think, since March, we have been working on getting a data privacy agreement with Zoom so that it is FERPA-compliant. And they did so on behalf of the entire state of Wisconsin. The ink has finally dried on that and we will be able to use Zoom as a platform. And the nice thing about Zoom is it allows for presentation mode so that the, the teacher could be on and then students would not necessarily be on the screen as well. But we need to work through that and how to make sure that it's not confusing for families going from Google to Zoom and the other platforms. And Nancy and her team and Josh and his team are doing a nice job of that.
Melissa, I have a follow-up. Will families need to opt-in or opt-out, or will this cover us?
They, if they, the way that they would opt out, in our proposal is that we put all families on notice that this could happen. And if they have concerns, they should contact their child teacher who will work with the technology integrator and the principal if they have concerns. So we will definitely put all families on notice with respect to the fact that the teacher could record the lesson. If they complete the opt-out for directory data, for the directory data all, then their student will be opted out of having their picture and their name shown in the course of that, recording of that lesson. And we're going to have to work with the teacher to facilitate how we do that. I did have, Ellen ran the numbers for us just to see how many students in the entire school district have completed the directory data opt-out of all. And last year, it was six students.
Okay.
1,000. So I don't see, perceive that as being a barrier.
So parents who have an issue should talk to their teachers. You'll be working with teachers to facilitate that, that. So it's covered.
Yep.
Cool, thanks.
Andrew?
Yes, I'm pointing out, this is, this is a pretty big deal and I want to thank you, Melissa, for that. We, you know, as I've said before, and people, you know, smile or chuckle, but I say, you know, when you're a big district like we are, you know, we don't, you know, we, sometimes we go and dictate the terms. You know, we're not a little 200-school district making a, you know, making a $300 technology order. And we did that to a, to a company that's now a huge company. Something didn't quite meet our needs. We told them how our needs needed to be met and they read it over and said, yes, ma'am, and signed it and did it for the whole state of Wisconsin. And that's a, that's a big deal. Because now that's going to help, that's going to help other districts too, who maybe were struggling with what to do with the privacy decisions, small districts that don't have, you know, full-time counsel. So that's, that's a big deal. So thank you.
I want to give credit to Melissa and her team on that, too. It was a lot of work, a lot of work. And I, I think it, it impacts more than just districts in Wisconsin because they took our privacy language and they're incorporating it into the regular terms as well. So yeah, great job, everyone around.
Thanks. Thank you, Josh.
Noah?
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to do this on everyone. It's just something really short. Number one, great work. That, that is so cool. Zoom is going to be well-used, I know, in, when the fall comes. Two would be on the opt-out. It is my understand, I think I read it right, that these are not public records, right? I can't, you can't just request a class recording. Okay, thank you. So that being correct, does that opt-out still apply because you can't, the public is not able to access it? I thought private recordings were pretty much, you could do whatever you want.
So there will still be student records? So there's public records and student records. Student records are guided under FERPA. And so that's why we still need to give our families the ability to opt-out through our directory data opt-out, because it will be a student record.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, we'll move this one forward. And then, Vicky, you're going to be doing the selection of providers for the community-based after-school programs?
Yeah, thank you, Dawn. This is something that we do every year. The district puts out a request or proposal process for partners to collaborate with our district to facilitate the 21st Century Community Learning Center programs at the elementary program sites. So the memo that you have is the recommendation for awarding the 21st Century Community Partners for this school year.
Are there any questions? Christina?
All right, I know it's getting late. Vicky, how does this, how does the plan to vote tonight impact this moving forward? Like, not at all? What?
No, we'll, we'll still work with our partners. And in fact, we already have meetings set up. We were just waiting for the votes tonight to determine next steps with them.
So it's all good?
Yes, ma'am.
Cool, thank you.
Anything else? All righty, we will move that forward. And that concludes the teaching and learning report.
Nice job, Dawn. Thank you.
Thanks, Dawn. So the, the last agenda here is setting future agenda items. Does anyone have anything specifically other than the obvious things that'll be coming forward? Christina?
I'm sure this will be on every agenda, but I particularly want to prioritize those waivers through GPI or at the federal level so that we put that at the top as those come in. Steve?
Anybody have anything else? With that being said, we do have the organization work session posted, but no agenda items in that section for so with that being said, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Appalled? All right, that, that concludes the and thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Have a good night, everybody.
Night.
Night.
You have been watching the Green Bay Area Public School District's Board of Education meeting. Please visit the school district's website, www.gbaps.org to view the program again. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling 920-448-2025 or by email at communications@gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and/or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.